Welcome, welcome to our Poetry Town Council meeting for a beautiful town of Poetry, Texas on Thursday, October 19th, 2023. We welcome you, thank you for being quiet. We welcome you and want you to feel valued, heard, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and what minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. Your opinions, suggestions, and comments in favor of or against a topic are welcome. At this time, I need to remind the public that a disruption of this meeting may be considered a criminal offense according to Texas Penal Code 3813 and 4205. You must be signed up to speak during the meeting and stay on topic according to state law. To preserve the order and decorum of the meeting, any person who makes profane, slanders, threatening remarks, or becomes disruptive during the meeting will be asked to leave or may be escorted out by a peace officer and given a citation. At this time, our volunteer clerk, Evvy Anderson, will take...
Hello? Councilman Terry Fowler?
Here.
Councilman Sidney White?
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Blake?
Here.
Councilman Mike Jackie?
Here.
Councilman Tom Anderson?
Here.
Mayor Tara Second?
Here. Okay, and quorum is confirmed. Thank you so much, Evvy. Okay, we want to, under items of commen... Oh, I'm sorry. Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Fowler's going to lead us in pledge and invocation.
(Inaudible) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, you may have a break. Everybody, Fowler, we just thank you for this day, we thank you for the cool weather and we thank you for the rain, Lord. We just thank you for this time together, Lord. We just pray that we use this time in the best means that we can and respect each other's time and we respect each other's comments. And we usher you into this place, Lord. We ask that you be with us, be with us to save travels in this goddamn party home. Amen.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, so under community, items of community interest, we want to say thanks to Terry Fowler for getting our Town Hall fire extinguisher recertified. So thanks to Kevin Sinkovich for spending nine hours getting that fire exit plan drawn up. Thanks to Josh Sinkovich for spending 12 hours setting up all the electronics at Town Hall, and he's still doing that. And the reason I mention the hours is, according to our auditor, they want the number of hours of volunteers. So if you do volunteer, it really does help if you can let me know and then we can put it down and make it official in our logbook and it's for insurance and auditing, so helpful. And thanks to Sherri Vincent for typing the minutes. The Town Hall now has a phone number. It is 469-902-7001. It is not yet working. We've had a little problem with that. Josh did spend some time on that, but it's still not yet working. It is connected to our internet. Town Hall is open on Thursdays, 1 to 5, and so Teresa is loving her new space. Anyway, so workshop agenda, we're going to go get on it. Tonight, we have a workshop. Two years ago, we dealt with the whole trash issue because we're required by state law for sanitation and safety and healthcare, health of our citizens. It is our mandate to do so, so we dealt and we decided after five months of deliberation with citizens, vendors, council, we decided to go with a free-market system. So we had four, we originally had eight or nine who were servicing our area, and I'm doing this to give you, for those who don't know, a little short history on that so you're aware. At that time, it was decided that our people, we had some small business owners in our area, and I commend them for thinking about our small business as in the area, that they wanted to go with a free market instead of an exclusive. So we had about eight or nine who were servicing. There were four who chose to become approved vendors for the town, and that namely, you have to, you know, pay the franchise fee, have the liability insurance, have the small, use the smaller trucks, the exponentially causeless damage on our roads, and just, you know, a list of things. And so we had four who did that. Since then, fast forward, so last year, I think Reed sold his business to a business called Cards Recycling. And so that was last June, I believe. And then recently, we had CRS, who was much beloved, had a health issue, had to sell out. She sold her business to Card, she and her husband, I believe. And then AWT also sold out. So it's, we've had a lot of changes in our small town, and so that's in a nutshell why we're here. We've had some recent complaints about the services, so we want to listen again to our citizens and we also, since we have now just Cards and Titan in our area, it's almost like an exclusive because Titan, I believe, right now is servicing about 58 Polycarts. Cards has the rest. And then we have a number of people who just have opted to not have any, is my understanding. So at this time, we're going to time, Evvy's going to be timing. So Evvy, I need you to take a card and put, I wanted to do this in front of you so that it wasn't, there's nothing under the table at all. We want to have it all in open. Will you please put on a card, one, two, three, and then let them draw?
Okay, there's only three here tonight?
There's three, and I will tell, while you're doing that, I'll explain. Yesterday, I got a call from Arnold, who was formerly of Ameritex and now has been bought by Live Oak, which is a much larger company. And he said that it wasn't feasible for them to come. It would take them eight or nine months to get a more local dump site approved. And so, and they, so he said that, but then he also said something that was kind of sad, I thought. He said, "Well, two years ago, I've never been to a council meeting that was so raucous and just mean spirited." And so I know there are a lot of good people in our town, but that was his take, and so let's show them differently this time, I hope. Okay? So, all right, so Evvy, you got the one, two, three? All right, so will one person from each of the solid waste vendors come up and get your number? And mix them up, Evvy, if you would?
Yep.
Do we have?
Can you hand me that red cup, please?
She's a former teacher, she can handle this.
Okay. And if you, I guess, write your name on the card, your company name. And I'm sorry.
I don't really see the kind of people that...
Yes. Okay, who gets to go first?
Number one.
Okay.
Can you, what is your company?
Blackjack.
Blackjack. Thank you.
Okay, so it looks like Blackjack will be going first, and when you're ready, we'll give you just a little bit to get yourself together and then tell us when you're ready, and then Ms. Evvy will begin timing you.
Is there an option for a PowerPoint presentation?
No.
I'm so sorry. Yeah, we tried in the past and it just didn't work. We don't, this isn't our facility.
No worries. What we did is we actually made two different ways to present.
Okay.
Okay, on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you.
Okay, so Evvy, if you could go ahead and, are you ready, sir?
I think so.
Okay. Get ready, and you have 20 minutes, sir.
Okay, I don't think I'll need it.
Okay.
My name is Dick Damine, and I'm one of the co-owners of Blackjack Disposal. It's a company that Tim Oliver and I started, and we've been in business now for almost six years. We started with basically one Polycart on a county road and built the company now. We have over, very close to 5,000 subscription customers and a little bit over 10,000 municipal customers. So we've done, we've had quite a bit of growth over the first 10, or over the first five years, and we're looking forward to continuing that growth. What's fueled our growth has been that we offer excellent service at a very fair price. We do a lot of things that other companies don't, but we don't jack up our price as a result of that. So people find that we're a very fair value, and we get lots of people signing up with us every day as a result of that. For our Town of Poetry proposal, we wanted to stress that we are a local company. Our facility is about 15 miles away from this location. Not only are we close, but we also have trucks coming through Kaufman County five days a week up and down Highway 34. So that if there ever was some type of unusual situation that occurred, it'd be very easy for us to shift assets over to the Town of Poetry and get those situations resolved. We have, if not the newest...
Pardon me for interrupting.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure everyone can hear you. Can you hear him at the back?
If you could speak more into the mic, you could even pick the mic up.
All right, how's that?
Makes better, thank you.
All right, sorry about that. We have, if not the newest fleet in the area, one of the newest fleets. All of our trucks that we've purchased and are operating in the area are 2000, we have one 2018 truck, and then I think every other one is either a 23, 22, or 24. So part of that fleet is we were just awarded and just started the City of Greenville, which is a big customer, 10,000 homes, 650 dumpsters. We started that, it was a phase-in start. We started that August for roll-off, September for commercial customers, and October this month for residential customers. And it's been a very smooth start, and we're very proud of the job we've done there. One of the trucks that we use is an automated truck, which has the arm that comes out and grabs the cart and dumps it into the trash, and that would be the truck that we would assign here in Poetry. It's a very efficient truck. It helps keep, the trash is picked up at a much greater pace. It only requires one person on the truck, so it's less manpower. They only, and they picked up the trash more quickly, so it's a, what we call a higher productivity vehicle. We'd be planning on running the city in two separate days. And that, with that plan there, is to keep the route smaller so that as folks get home from work, the trash has already been picked up. It's not a going into the evening type of situation with trash collection. We provide all three facets of trash collection, as I already mentioned, the commercial dumpsters, the roll-off dumpsters, and the residential Polycarts. The trucks we would use here, in addition to being the automated truck, it's a 20 cubic yard truck, so it's a single axle and has less wear and tear on the streets than some of the bigger trucks. Your residents would have their choice of being billed monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, or annually. It'd be totally up to them. It's no problem for us to do any of those. Our truck will send a text reminder to each resident as they're approaching, typically when they're about 15 minutes away, to remind folks if they may have forgotten to put their trash out, that you need to get it out because we're on the way. So that comes something as a service that we use as well. And we offer a bulky waste collection, which would be on the first full week of each month. It would be one service that folks would have to call in and get on a list, but they would be more than welcome if they wanted to throw something that wouldn't fit in their cart, like a mattress, or a chair, or couch, table, whatever the case might be, if they have something like that to throw away, or just extra trash. They call it in and put it out on that first week of the month, and we'll pick it up that week with one of our rearload trucks, also 20-yard, that can be, that can handle that type of waste disposal. You can see on the list, our pricing, it's $27.50 per month, which includes the $6.50 franchise fee. Additional carts would be $12 per month. Includes the monthly, the monthly bulky waste collection, there's no additional charge for that. And there's also four 30-yard dumpsters that the town could use at their discretion whenever they'd like, either if they have a, maybe a property that needs like special help and you want to use one of your contenders for that, that's fine. Or if you want to use them all for community cleanups, that's fine. Just however you all want to deploy those four dumpsters, we'll work with you and get that done. Going through the proposal that you have, you have our resumes there. You can see that I've been in the trash business for over 30 years, and my partner, Tim, has been in the trash business over 20 years. So we're not new at this. We've got a good understanding of what it takes to run a trash company, how to be successful, how to do a good job. And I think that shows in our customer base, in that we get really great reviews from our customers, and it's a very strong and thriving company. I also included certificates of insurance that show that we meet the insurance requirement as well as the detailed pricing schedule there on the last page. So that is my presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do you have any idea which two days, or is that flexible, or what do you have something in mind?
It is flexible, but I think we're planning on Wednesday and Thursday. Yep, Wednesday and Thursday is what would be the tentative plan.
Okay, so if something was missed on a Wednesday, you could come back on a Thursday?
Certainly. But even if it was missed on Thursday, because we have trucks in the neighborhood, we could come back on Friday even, so.
Okay.
I have a long list of questions.
All right, come on.
This is just so we're all educated, these questions are probably asked by everybody. So 10,000 municipal customers, that's the single contractor that owns Greenville?
That's Greenville's, yes, sir.
And that started this fiscal year?
That started this fiscal year, yes.
Okay. Any other passing municipalities and workforce?
Yeah, we also have the City of Crandall, which is about 1,300 homes. And then we have a county contract with Kaufman County for some city facilities, or some county facilities.
How are you, Mike? You could provide a list of all municipalities if requested?
Absolutely.
Okay. I appreciate your statement, said we don't jack up our prices, and I'm going to jump down to the bottom because we was talking about contracts. In your mind, what's a contract look like as far as the length of contract for exclusivity?
Typically, it's five years.
Okay.
That's what our proposal is based on.
Okay.
And so what that does is it allows us to amortize our equipment at a reasonable rate, and we don't have, the shorter it is, the more you have to recapture that initial capital investment.
Sure.
So it's just, it's not too long, it's not too short, it's a five years, seems to be the...
And in those contracts with the other municipalities, is the rate locked, or is it contracted every year?
Okay, so the way it's prescribed, increases are prescribed.
Okay.
And it's based on the CPI index for the Dallas-Fort Worth area.
Okay.
So if the CPI is...
Seven?
Seven, it could be seven. There are some that have, you know, not a floor but a ceiling.
Okay.
Saying like it won't be more than 7%. For example, you know, for a long time there, we didn't have any inflation at all, so we didn't really have any price increases.
So yours is locked to the CPI of the metroplex?
To the CPI, it's not something that we would just willy-nilly come in and say like, we need a 9% increase.
Yeah, you are wanting to expand, so therefore we need to charge the other cities more so we can help our expansion.
Right.
Okay.
So it would be something that we could both look at. It's an independent set of data.
Sure.
And it's nothing that either of us control.
So the truck that you want to provide services is a single sidearm, and I get it for the pace, and we're kind of stretched out in our city. What's the weight of that truck? Are the GVWR rating?
33,000.
Okay, are you familiar with our ordinance and our weight restrictions?
It meets that.
Okay. I would agree, though, that I guess exclusivity is probably going to reduce the wear and tear on the road just because the less vendors, but I just want to make sure that it's in compliance with our ordinance.
Right.
I do appreciate the text response, that's, I guess that's kind of a new type of technology, but that's nice. The truck that's going to service the bulk waste, also 20-yard trucks?
Yes.
Still meets the ordinances?
It does.
And then, it's not a big deal, but this is a rural area, it says no trash outside the cart. I don't know how many times I've seen feed sacks stuffed in feed sacks, stuffed in feed sacks sitting beside the cart, and that won't be picked up?
No, but you can call it in for your monthly pickup.
Okay.
So it can be serviced, you just have to be more strategic with it.
Okay.
And then there's also an option for additional carts. So if somebody is generating more trash than what one cart can hold, they can order a second cart, and that way it could still all be, all still be contained.
I think I had one more question. It was tied into your fee schedule, so I appreciate it.
All right.
Two quick questions. One, you talked about you have the option of paying monthly, quarterly, or annually. Is there any discount on annual?
There's not.
It's a monthly rate?
No, sir. It's just whatever is most convenient for the person.
Okay, and I'm guessing that you're going to change out 100% of the Polycarts that, well, I guess 100% because we don't have any of your Polycarts in town, right?
Right, so each person that signs up with us will bring a brand-new Polycart to their house. Or two, if that's what they opt.
Okay, that's it.
My question is, where is your office? In other words, if there's a problem, who do we call, or do the citizens call about an issue? And how would that work?
So on all of our equipment, both our trucks and our Polycarts, there's our telephone number is on there. And so if a citizen had an issue, they could basically just go out and look at the Polycart and give us a call. We have staff that will answer their call and address the situation, makes, you know, have steps to get it resolved. They can also email. We get, you know, quite a few emails, we get text messages. People will actually text message back to us from the text message we send them, telling them that we're in the area. Like a day or two later, they might say like, "Oh, I want to have a bulky pickup, you know, this month." And so they'll text us back to that number, and we can accept it that way as well. Or Facebook messages. So we take, there's a wide array of methods that people can reach out to us.
You said you're local. Do you have just one office or one site?
Yes, we just have our one site, which is 15 miles from here in Cache.
In Cache?
Yes, sir. Right on Highway 34.
Yes, okay.
You know, I've had quite a few of our citizens reach out to me saying that the trucks that pick it up with the mechanical arm, now that they put it on the ground, they actually break off the wheels, which I had happen to one of my cans, too. You know, I'm no trash expert, so is there a reason why that wouldn't happen with your particular truck?
It comes down to the skill of the driver. Our driver that operates that truck is very good, very experienced. I'm not going to say it has never, ever happened, but if it does happen, if a wheel is broken, if the customer will let us know, we'll bring them a new cart, no problem.
Okay, good to know. I do got one more question.
Yes.
Billing, is that all handled by Blackjack? And you submit franchises to us, or you have the expectation of the town to collect and pay you all?
No, it's my understanding that we would do the collection of the billing and then remit the franchise fee on a quarterly basis.
Do you bill, pay your bills on time?
Usually a little faster than on time.
Okay, excellent. May I ask, how many employees you have?
We have 43 employees.
And how many of those are out in the field picking up the actual trash?
Trash drivers and helpers, 37, 36.
So you have roughly six employees who maybe manage the offices and can answer phone calls?
We have two mechanics that I didn't include in the 36 or 37, and then there's about, then there are four ladies that answer phones.
Okay. Do you feel like that they are able to adequately handle the calls that come in?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Are you happy with their professionalism?
I am.
Okay. Any other questions for council? Okay.
All right, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, secondly, is Cards Recycling? Cards Recycling, I believe Jason Fitzgerald is his name.
Thank you. No, not that I can tell.
So Evvy, got the timer? Okay.
Do you guys care if I just hold it?
That's fine. That's good. I like that.
Well, thank you, guys, for allowing me to be here. My name is Jason Fitzgerald, I'm with Cards Recycling. We are a young company still, just about six years old, with a leadership group with about 250 years of experience. So myself, over 20 years in the trash, and I love talking trash, so I'm happy to be here tonight and answer all your questions and present our proposal. So I know that we first came into Poetry when we purchased Reed Sanitation and learned a lot about your town. We recently just purchased CRS and AWT, and I'd love to say that every transition is perfect, and there's never any problems, and everyone stays on through the acquisition, and we don't ever have to rewrite, rewrite the program, but that's not the case. We have had some opportunities, but I feel like our team has really, including Jason, I brought Jason with me tonight, he stayed on with us from Reed Sanitation, has really done a great job of bringing the group back and making sure we get everyone taken care of and picked up. I know you guys are a new town, and we are excited for the opportunity for an exclusive contract. And we put together a proposal here to give you a couple options. One, with that franchise fee of $6.50, our rate would be $21.50, plus a $6.50 would make it $28. I included the tax there, the proposal's in the back page there. I included the tax as asked for both counties, Hunt and Kaufman. I know that there's a line there, and I wanted to make sure that that was divided correctly. That comes with a cart, a brand-new cart provided by us to each customer. So the customers that currently have carts would be replaced with brand-new carts, section four of this. Additional cart price would be $10 extra per month. And then I put some commercial container pricing at the bottom. Free services to the city, you would have your choice of a container commercially at the city, whether it be at a fire station in the future, a police station, and/or City Hall, or if you have a park nearby that you'd like to see one at, that's no problem. City cleanups, we'd be able to offer a spring and fall, two free 30-yard open tops for both cleanups, or you could do all of them at one time. Some cities like to have just one cleanup and just bring everyone out and bring those four containers out at one time. So you'd have that option as well. We're continuing to use our, we have three different trucks that we utilize. We have an eight-yard, an 11-yard, a 13-yard. We do have some 20 yards, and I'm happy to say that we've purchased some new single-axle automated side-load trucks that'll be here in the near future. I'd say probably toward the first of Q1 because things are so tough right now to get in. And that'll allow us to have, right now, our trucks have the rearload application with the tippers on the back, which is great, but having that arm where you just have to hit a button helps keep employees a lot longer. They show up to work on the hot days and the cold, cold days. So that's our biggest focus, is employee retention. I know a lot of companies, I know it's just picking up trash, but for us, it's about our employees, it's making sure that we have consistency, and you gain consistency when you keep employees around for a long time. So that's our goal as a company. We've shifted a lot in the last year or two based on some of those, some of the feedback that we've gotten, not only from customers, but also employees with, you know, when you have, when you do have situations where a driver's out sick, or someone just decides to leave, you might have some inefficiencies with knowing the route. So we've gone fully automated with tablets in our trucks to make sure that we can ensure that they have turn-by-turn directions. We have applications that we can install on our trucks if needed for a third eye system that would allow us the technology to be able to show tracking for our trucks in our town. And give you the ability to see them in live time, so you could see where the path was. If someone called in and said, hey, uh, I'm missing something at the corner of such and such, we can actually record that data for up to fourteen days. It typically does, we typically don't use that footage unless it's necessary. Uh, from time to time on a bulk pickup, someone will tell us that we stole their bike, uh, but we can go back and look at the video footage and, and talk about the facts. Uh, and that, you know, I know that for us as a company, uh, we, uh, we hit the ground running. Uh, we started back in twenty-eighteen, uh, with one municipality and we're up to almost fifty-one today. Uh, now we've done that through a lot of hard work, uh, and a lot of, uh, we've had some acquisitions along the way as well with, of course, AWT, CRS, and Jason with Reed's. Uh, but we've been very fortunate to, um, acquire some companies that were, were ready to sell and that, that really kind of meshed well with what our footprint was in the areas that we were servicing. And that helped us with us and, and them. So it wasn't like a hostile takeover. These were mutual agreements. So we, we, uh, appreciate their, their trust in our company and trust in our leadership group to be able to take over and, and help them through that process. I know you asked some questions, uh, to Blackjack. Try to answer some of those. As far as price increases, we're similar in that aspect. This industry's very, uh, I wouldn't say copycat, but if it's not broken, don't fix it. So in order for us to keep up with cost increases, uh, not only from our disposal sites, but also fuel, um, our labor. Of course, our employees always wanna make more each year. We make sure that we, we follow that CPI as well. So we, we look at that very, uh, stringent every year, uh, and then that's a negotiation with the council to, to basically say, hey, this is where we think we should be. Um, and then we kinda go from there. There's no arm wrestling matches or tug-of-war. We, we try to work it out, uh, together. So that could be, that could vary. I think in the last couple of years, it's been kind of different, uh, because we've had some circumstances that were not typical, uh, very unfamiliar. But I think it started to come down quite a bit. I think is, but I think it's about three and a half, almost four percent now where it used to be around nine and a half. So things have calmed down quite a bit. As far as employees, our, we'll be running out of our Princeton yard. So we, we just recently purchased, uh, Barnes Disposal as well. And so we'll be running out of Barnes, uh, at the Barnes Old Yard there in Princeton. And so that's where we're currently running to pick up your trash now. We utilize a couple of different disposal sites, uh, all within this, about an hour's time from this, this facility, so. Any questions for me?
Well, I sure do. And this is, uh, these are gonna be the tougher questions here. Cause part of the reason that, um, I brought up and I requested this topic be on the agenda, and I think other councilmen had similar ideas and citizens were reaching out about it, is because, um, I had run into a group of citizens, I think it was about thirteen, fourteen unique people on Nextdoor, who were talking about trouble that they were having, and unfortunately it was specifically with Cards, with things like, um, wheels being broken off of dumpsters, customer service not picking up, and, uh, missing pickups, those sort of things. Now, I've personally not had too much trouble with y'all, uh, until recently, cause I've been using y'all since y'all have been out here. But I just wanted to give you an opportunity to, uh, address any of those now in case you say, oh, we had a lack of, you know, customer service people for a while, it's ramping up. Something like that, before we discuss it as a council, I wanted to bring it up now, so that you had a time to address those three issues people have been running into with Cards.
Absolutely. Uh, I appreciate the question. We, we get feedback quite often. Social media's fantastic for that. I'm sure you guys are fully aware of that. We, as a company, as you know, like I said in the beginning, have grown rapidly. We are, are a growing company. And, and it seems like every time we hit an area, um, it just really kinda just spreads, uh, and that's great. Uh, sometimes, there are times that it's challenging to find the right time to hire more people. And sometimes you don't know when that is until you start to get calls saying, well, but people aren't answering our calls. So we've taken a step further and we now have a very, um, I would call it a simple phone system, but it's not. It's very complicated. And what this does for us, and we've, we've actually mounted in our customer service center, now we have over twenty-four customer service reps that are answering phone calls for us with two different locations that have a script of everything that we service. Uh, they have a spreadsheet that shows every municipality that we service and then all the details that are incorporated within that municipality. And that's my job to make sure that that information gets in there. So that's, there's a lot of pressure there, but I make sure that, that they're, uh, loaded up with ammunition, so to say. In regards to, um, staffing that customer service center, we have a, a customer service manager who is monitoring television screens that show phone calls in the queue. Calls not being answered. We also have a secondary company now, just recently, that after a three-minute time, I know three minutes is a long time on hold, but after a three-minute time period, it goes to a secondary company that answers questions that they can quickly answer. And then, and questions that can't be answered get emailed directly to the service manager, who then responds either by email or a quick phone call back. She doesn't leave until all of the calls or, or questions that have come in are done for the day. So we also, with that report, we get a week, a daily report, a weekly report, a monthly report on percentages of calls that have been dropped. How to, how to make sure that that's minimized, so we don't have a lot of, uh, incomplete calls to make sure that our customer satisfaction is okay. Because those are things that we do care about and we wanna make sure that we're not missing phone calls. Now, I know that there, there have been times when we have, and we know that, and we are, that's why we've taken the measures that we have to get better at what we do. And so with that growth, we've, we've taken, you know, and you have times during the day where people call that are higher volume times than others. Your lunch hour times, your morning time, and your afternoon time. And so we just, that's why we brought in that secondary company, because you can staff a hundred people to answer your calls, but not everybody throughout the day is gonna call and take their, and, and take a turn. They all call at one time. So that's why we've taken those extra measures. We've, we've amped up our, uh, website portal also for questions, or you, if you wanna do it electronically, you can. Uh, also our social media as far as a platform for messaging, you can do that as well. Uh, so we're really trying to do everything we can to give people the opportunity to give us feedback, um, good or bad, so we can improve those systems. And, and I know that, you know, people, uh, may not want to give that negative feedback, but I want it so we can correct it and do better. So I hope that answers your question. As far as wheels, all of our carts are, are warranted. So these carts are meant to take a beating, and sometimes they do. I, I wish I could tell you that, you know, I'm a, I'm a former garbage man. I, I, as far as a guy that's been on route, I'm glad those days are behind me. And my body's glad that those days are behind me, but there are times when, uh, especially someone else's cart, you know, it might be a bit older, as the temperatures vary. You might have some opportunities where, um, it, it helps the, the fact of the wheel being broken or, or something happened to the container. So that's why we like to provide our own carts that have a ten-to-twelve-year warranty on them. The Toder has a twelve-year warranty on their carts. It gives us the opportunity to take those back to Toder. I can count on one hand how many carts we usually replace throughout the year for a municipality. It's really minimal. Uh, the biggest key factor for carts, uh, having issues are Fourth of July and the winter, because people put their ashes in their, their containers or their fireworks, and it doesn't, it doesn't bode well. I used to be the guy that said, how in the world could you burn down one of your trash containers on the Fourth of July? How do you not put your fireworks out? Until this past year, when my, uh, twelve-year-old put fireworks in our container. And I, I was the guy who had to go get his own container after it burned down, so. I'm, uh, I'm familiar with that, but we do have warranties. That's why I put that in our packet to show you some of our vendors that we use. We use Wastequip, Toder, and a number of, a lot of few, uh, other vendors. Some of them right here in Texas. Wastequip's a, a Texas company here that we utilize quite a bit.
So how recently did you make those changes in the customer service for outsourcing the overflow calls?
That's happened within the last month and a half with all the acquisitions that we've had. We've needed extra, extra support in our call centers. And then, of course, every time there's billing, we wanna make sure that we capture any questions that may come. Because with acquisitions come a lot of change.
Right.
Some of the acquisitions that we take on are companies that have been around for thirty-plus years. And so when you start to look at that kind of change, some of these routes were done at midnight. Now we're, we're saying we're gonna be there from seven till seven. That's a phone call. You know, do you pick up on Fourth of July? That's another phone call. And so a lot of unanticipated calls came through the call center that we are now trying to put FAQs on our website, so we can answer a lot of that. That way they're not calling into the call center, so we're doing a better job from a marketing standpoint to make sure that that information's out there and integrating that information with our cities as well.
That's great. And that is very recent. I mean, that's exactly the sort of stuff that I wanted to know, cause it sounds like y'all are addressing some of the problems that people have.
Yeah, we don't want bad news when, when our name's out there. We want, we wanna be a great company for the people that we pick trash up for, so.
See, I have a, a question. You're, you say you're privately held. Actually, you're owned by Kinderhook Industries out of New York, right?
Correct. It's a, there is a partnership there with Kinderhook and the sole owner, Dan Christensen, so they are split, but still a private company. We're not a publicly traded company.
They are private, yeah, they're private equity. Uh, Kinderhook is, and they own a variety of companies.
Absolutely.
And, including Seville and Trash, and, and including, uh, Live Oak and Ameritex.
Okay.
So your headquarters is in Arkansas?
We are located in Arkansas, yes.
Yeah, but your owner is located in New York City.
Our owner is located in Arkansas as well.
Hmm, really?
Dan Christensen.
The...
The equity group is out in New York.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, well, they advertise that they own you.
Well, they have ownership of the company, yes.
They have total ownership is what they advertise.
They don't. That's, that's a false statement.
How much do they own then?
I, I could, I'd be more than happy, Tom, to talk to you about that offline. That's, that's private information.
Well, I guess to give Tom a minute to breathe, so, you know, my thought, Jason, would only be, we've, we started this, as Tara said, two years ago, thinking we'd have multiple players and they all sort of became two players and, and I don't know, I just feel like they're, and I know that the business is big and I don't propose to understand any part of it, but, you know, if, if we were to choose to go with Cards or Blackjack or whoever, I just have this uncanny sense that like a year from now, we're gonna be with Progressive, or we're gonna be with Waste Management or somebody else. It seems like, it's like the little fish getting eaten by bigger fish and all. And I know you can't predict the future, but at least starting out, it'd be nice to understand who these companies are. I mean, are you truly just two guys, put their own money into it, and this is their company? Or is it backed by venture capitalists or, you know, whatever kind?
So Dan, Dan started the company. I started with Dan back in that twenty-eighteen time period and had owned the company for, uh, for the past five years solely, by himself. Um, and then with the growth and acquisitions that, that we were taking on, he needed some more, um, juice, I guess, as they say. We had maxed out our potential with the banks that we were, that we were working with, basically, basically because we were going to them and they're saying, hey, we, we just can't. I mean, we, you're gonna have to go to another bank and another bank. And so what happens, and I, and I'm sure you guys understand, is when you get to that point, you bring on partners that can help you with extra, um, equity. So you can do that, and that's, that's what we did. That's what Dan did with that, with that company.
So are those investors allowing you that also have holdings in other waste management companies? Are they allowing you to operate autonomously, or is there like some meeting that occurs where you were all sitting there with all your little brothers and sisters? You know, in the industry?
Well, that would, that would be considered collusion, and that, that's against the law. That's not-
But I mean, apparently they, they have holdings in other-
Yes, and they, and directors, some of the, they have same directors on both your board as well as Live Oak.
And they have all signed disclosures where they cannot share information.
Okay, well, and, and don't hear me wrong. I'm not, I'm not saying you're doing anything illegal.
Right.
I'm just, w- we keep changing. We had the same issue with our internet company. We used to have lots of, now we have like two. They keep getting gobbled up and now we have, and I know that's just kinda the nature of the beast. Again, I was just curious that, you know, so you really are Cards, you're sort of standalone. You've got this tranche of money from some investors rather than going to a bank, but-
And I think that should make you feel comfortable to know that we have the, the financing, we have the capital to purchase new trucks. To purchase, like the trucks I talked about earlier, the, the containers. Takes a lot of capital. We just took on a new contract in Springdale. There's twenty-three thousand homes there that we're servicing, times two, because it's trash and recycling. And so almost fifty thousand carts that we purchased there just for that contract, on top of the trucks that are now, used to, the trucks, she used to run us around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Now those trucks are four-nineteen. Uh, you know, overnight, steel prices jacked up and, and before you know it, we're spending way more money, d- twice the money that we used to for the, for a truck that's really not, not any different. Uh, there's more gadgets on it, but they just break more frequently, so.
Just out of curiosity, what does a Polycart cost roughly? Is it fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, a-
Seventy-five dollars seems to be the standard cost for a cart. And it just really kinda depends if you lump in the, the assembly and the delivery for the carts as well. There's a lot of extra costs that go into that. Resin kinda hit an all-time high in the last two years, but it's starting to drop down a little bit more. Um, we, we do, uh, partner our, in leverage our buying power with some of the contracts that we do have with, perch, like a Springdale, to get carts at a lower, lower price with our vendors, uh, because, uh, volume always speaks. So we try to use those synergies with, um, with those companies to make sure that we can, and that's what, that's what we use Kinderhook for. They have synergies with vendors that we can get a better price maybe on a, on a truck than we would if we were just a standalone. And so we look to use them as a partner, uh, to help us with those cost savings to pass on to our customers. Whereas a standalone, we'd have to incur those and, and still have to, uh, we may not be as big as we are if we're, if we're just a one-person show. And that's where we kinda got to. So I don't, I don't want, and we still wanna make sure that this is about the people that we service. Uh, and that's why we're still a privately-held company. We've had offers from other companies, that's no secret. But, but we really wanna stay private. We wanna be able to offer things that others can't.
Well, I guess one of the questions is, and I think Tara had mentioned it, is the number of complaints we've had about various things with Cards. Service, as well as the town getting replies, uh, to our emails or our contacts about contracts and various things that, that our secretary needs. That we've had issues with Cards as well as citizens. So what is it that you can do that will change that whole perspective, not just with customers, but with the town? So that we get paid our, uh, rightly due fees, we get the list of customers that, you know, we require as part of our agreement with you. And what can you do to improve in that area that we see needs improvement?
So contacted a few times in the past month, uh, two months to make sure that we are on top of that. I am, I am going through with a highlighter basically and pinpointing every address to make sure it is in the city or the town limits versus not in the town limits. Um, and making sure that we have that list to go by. I've been working with Teresa to, to make sure that that list is a little bit better. I've been talking with the mayor as well to make sure we can, to help facilitate that list. Understanding the franchise agreement and making sure that not only did we follow it, cause we were following it with Reed Sanitation, but wanted to make sure we were also following it with, um, CRS and AWT, to make sure that, that we are paying the, the right amount to you. I know that right now that we're behind on Q-three because there was a, a drop-off when we started those acquisitions, to make sure that we're paying the right amount. It is tough or difficult when you don't have a list to go based off of, or a customer list to go, basically, what I've du- experienced in my, in my past has always been that the municipality or the township or city hands us a list of customers and we go based off of that list to make sure everyone is serviced. This is a little different because it's a franchise agreement with multiple companies that we have to basically make sure that we understand who's in, who's out, uh, for us in the city. So with taking on those new customers, this is kind of different because it, if the driveway's inside the city limits, then, then the house is inside the city limits. Uh, but there may be a driveway that's not. So we're making sure that we're paying for what, what's in the side and not what's outside. I hope that makes sense.
Jason, we, what was it, Tara, a year or two ago, we, we generated a list and sent it out to all of our vendors.
I have not seen that list.
Well, I would think when you acquired the other three businesses, that you would get their list.
Yeah, I mean, I personally mailed that out to everybody. I can certainly mail that out to you, cause we, we did all that grinding to figure out. And that's what we use when a customer calls and complains about the fee. We explain to them that we've already made the decision because we looked at the map, that they are part of the city.
Mike, I've been asking for a list for the last two months.
Well, okay, so, in, okay, so the first time I talked with you was last week prior to last June, I think, when you signed. But I just shook your hand for the first time today, and so- But I just shook your hand for the first time today. And so, I just, um, I wish there had been more communication. And the entire year and three months, we have yet to receive what's required for the agreement. We have not ever received the list that's required. And if you had just called, um, to ask for that, I would've been happy. We, we have reached out unsuccessfully. We've emailed unsuccessfully. And so it's been very frustrating on this end. Um, and then the last six weeks, I've been having to field numerous complaints, um, regarding not only the service, but just the, the communication. Now, I had to wait thirty minutes. I waited twenty minutes on a phone call, you know, trying to get through. So just those kind of things. And I was just to say, hey, can you give us a list? Or hey, you know, just, so it's not, it's not been the best. And so, um, I know that, it sounds like you're having a lot of growing pains. Would that be an accurate statement?
I think any company with the growth that we've had is gonna have some obstacles and opportunities, but to be fair, you know, neither company that we purchased, CRS or AWT, had a list ready for us.
Well, CRS has been very good about providing a list over, over the time that they were, were our provider. So I don't know what happened there, but, but they've been very good without that.
So contract length, five years as well?
We offered for a three-year. We'd love to do a five if possible, but three is what we proposed. That's why the, the rate's a little bit more, uh, based on a three-year agreement, because there's a lot that changes within that three-to-five-year period. Um, so that's why we offered a three-year term.
So what would be, would you be looking at for a five-year? I mean, is it really gonna change it? Is it gonna be like, two dollars off, five?
So the five-year rate, if, if negotiated, would make quite a bit of a difference. It's about a dollar fifty difference, um, if you went that five-year length.
Uh, well, I had one more thing I thought.
Oh, yes. How many days a week would you be picking up in poetry?
Currently, we're picking up Tuesdays and Thursdays, but we would, we'd wanna focus on a two-day week just to, to minimize the, the impact on having, uh, multiple trucks in the area, but also give you the allowance if there was a mess, to give a day in between to breathe, to have that, that contact. So we could come back out and service the next day.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
So you service fifty-one cities now. How many of those do you think you, um, provide recycling since recycling is in your name, so?
So we provide right now with our municipalities, probably, I would say, eleven to ten, uh, recycling contracts with those cities. And that really kind of depends on the market areas. And, and that's, that's an option for them. So, each municipality is given the option for recycling. Some of them just choose not to take it because the cost impact is so high. Because the commodity markets right now are just, they're, I mean, they're garbage. Uh, we're actually paying, yeah, it's a nice trash can. We're actually paying more to dispose our recycling material than we would our, our waste streams. So, just to give you an example, uh, recycling right now in this, in this market area is around eighty-five to ninety dollars a ton, um, to take to one of these, uh, Murphs in this, in this location. We recently, um, have tried to partner with some other companies that would give us a little bit better advantage with some, the market has come back a little bit, but not enough, uh, to give these companies the satisfaction they need to give the comfort of a better rate or a more aggressive rate. As you know, when rates go up, they don't often come back down. So, we're experiencing some of that as well.
I got some underhand softball pitches for you.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah. You've had a few curveballs. And, and first, I, I wanna say that, that I kind of subscribe to this help-me-help-you type attitude in life. So, uh, if we're not getting you what you need, uh, we are all volunteers and, and all that, uh, reach out to somebody else. Because, because I, I can only ask you to control one thing, and that's unwillingness. So, if, if you're unaware, I can help you do that. And then if, if you're unable because of X, Y, Z, I can help you do that. And then it comes to you. But I wanna make sure that we're meeting your expectations on the first two, and that's any vendor we have, okay? So if you've been reaching out, you're not getting what you need, like Mike said, he has the list, uh, maybe we can do that. So, uh, do you have the technology right now to send push notifications if, 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 um, the dates are gonna change? Say, say you're not picking up trash on July fourth. How, how do y'all notify customers?
So we use a call 'em all, uh, or text 'em all. If they have a landline, it goes to an answering machine or a call. If it's a cellphone, it goes to a text message, and we utilize that for all of our holidays.
Okay.
Uh, ordinance doesn't allow holidays, certain holidays anyway.
Yeah.
Well, we have, we have our...
In comment where there's something you can push a notification out quicker than, than snail mail, right? Uh, do you offer bulk, bulk pickup?
We do. We, we currently offer a one-time-a-month bulk pickup that goes with, with our, um, our regular pickup, that's included in that rate. And that's, we're, we really are gonna use the same truck, so it's gonna follow underneath that same guideline.
Okay.
And with that spring and fall cleanup, there might not be as much out there than, than normal. But your holidays, you typically have a little extra trash, and we understand that.
Okay. Uh, I did have a question about Kinderhook, and in, in, in no way, I don't wanna put you on, on the defensive. Do you know of any, any reason that they would be looking to build big enough to sell to one of the waste management IESI? Has that been discussed, to your knowledge?
That has not been discussed, no.
Fair enough. Uh, when was your acquisition of CRS and AWT about?
So, I wrote that down because I've been working, uh, with Teresa to try to find out what we owe for them for their Q three, because we did one of them right at the end of, I think there was one month for, um, AWT, because that started on June one.
Okay.
And then May, I believe the other one was, um, August eleventh was the CRS acquisition.
I think it's reversed, yeah.
Backwards, sorry, backwards.
Okay. So, um, so when we initially started this, the, the town needed funds. We don't have a, we didn't have sales tax, we didn't have property tax. So, this originally was generated, or made to generate funds to our town. But one of the other primary reasons for our ordinance was to try to lessen the destruction on our road that we're, we're having to pay for. So, when we wrote the original ordinance and we went the direction we did, all that was kept in mind. I guess moving forward, if, if your company has awarded this, do you have the logistics person to get this route laid out? Cause currently, y'all, y'all have had these two acquisitions for four to five months. After the AWT acquisition, y'all had every customer on my street. CRS, the original Cards customers, and AWT. There's three, there's three trash trucks that come down my road still to this day. That, that's a lack of logistics. That's costing your company money.
Absolutely.
Now, grace, grace abounds because y'all, y'all are trying to scale at such a big pace. But do you have someone in that logistics that's gonna figure this, this route out? And if, and, and part two, if we don't go to a exclusive contract, if we continue to just have multiple vendors, are you gonna fix that problem?
So right now, currently, we have a team in place. We, we call it our, our orange team because that's our colors. So, our orange team is consistent of a bunch of lead drivers that come in, and that's all they do, is they reroute routes. Most of the time when through acquisitions, there's not a lot of, um, paperwork for us to go through and, and simplify things. But then also you have your other routes that are overlaying that. So it does take a little bit of time, especially when you have turnover in the beginning, when you, you think you're gonna gather those employees and they may decide to go a different route, uh, for various reasons. But, um, in our, right now, what we're doing in our Princeton office is every day going through MapPAC is our, our system that we're using and dotting everything. So it kind of drops a pin on every stop. And that's what I've been doing to make sure I follow, uh, the guy, the boundary lines of the, the town's, uh, limits, to make sure that we do have a good list to, to, to give you.
So, without taking too much more of your time in the citizens, if Mike was able to give you a file, is, is there a file type that would plug into that?
Excel.
Excel would plug into that? Okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, the, the main deal, the main deal here is, of course, service and, and, uh, y'all have had some hiccups, but, uh, like I said, I'm given a lot of grace because of the pace of the acquisitions. Uh, we would have to look at everybody's contracts regardless. Do you typically have separation agreements where if the town's not pleased with your services, and what do those kind of look like?
So those termination clauses would consist of a cure period. So if we found there, there to be a, an instance where there was, you had a situation where we weren't servicing, uh, you correctly, and you provided a letter, uh, to us to say, this needs to be cured. We'd have fourteen days, ten to fourteen days to cure that with resolve. Um, and then if that's not cured, you would have the ability to, to breach the contract, for us, uh, to be in breach of contract.
Okay. And then, uh, the, uh, last underhand pitch, are we welcome to call your references that you've listed in here?
Absolutely.
Okay. I appreciate it.
No problem.
One more question. Um, and, and I've read Kinderhook, they're a six-billion-dollar company with twenty employees. So they're, and they're basically all East Coast, up on Fifth Avenue in New York. And one of the things they say is, "Our focus is on middle-market businesses with defensible niche market positioning." What is Cards' niche market positioning that appealed to Kinderhook?
Tom, I love you, man. This has been great. The, the, the thing that we've really focused on is local business. You know, I'm a, I come from doing this the last twenty years. Every company that I've been a part of has been a privately-held company, one owner. Um, and we, you know, unfortunately, I've been bought three times in my career. And that's just the nature of the beast. It happens. And each time, it's been better. And so every time I came in thinking that there was gonna be a horrible change, it actually was better. And then better even more the next time, because we had more support, more help, and better, better technology, better trucks, better equipment. You know, when we first started Cards, we, we, and, and our mission and our vision has always been customers-focused. And if we didn't care, if we, if we weren't concerned with the feedback, we wouldn't amp up our customer service. We wouldn't take all the measures that we've had, uh, in the past few months to make sure that everyone's getting taken care of. I, I know that our team works day and night to make sure that, I mean, I get Google reviews late at night from my team to say, hey, we need to respond to this, how, what happened? And I'm looking up how to resolve that issue. As far as what Kinderhook saw in us, I guess that's really kind of a question for Kinderhook. But we were approached by them because they saw a company that was really growing quickly and taking on the, these corporate companies. You know, when we came into Anna, we were the small, the small, the small guy. Uh, we had a few, I, I guess, maybe eight or nine municipal contracts at that time, none of that size. And just went in and interviewed with them and just told them that we really wanna just focus in on being a part of your community and growing with you, um, as a community. And, and that's really kind of stuck through. That's why there are letters in there right now. You know, I, I can tell you that for each municipality that we service and, and work with, and in the, the communities that we service, we're hiring within those communities. And so, we wanna make sure that we're also giving back to those places as well. I know for Kinderhook, that's what they're looking for. They're looking for companies that are the real deal. They're, we're not fakers. Uh, I know that we've had some hiccups, but we wanna ride those. I wanna make sure that we can take care of those Q three franchise fees. I understand that that is, um, I've recently found out that that's how you guys collect your, uh, your funds, and I wanna make sure that we can help do that. So, as far as what, what brought them to us, I, I don't know. I guess really, that's, that's a question for them, Tom.
Well, they, they also say they look for growth-oriented investment opportunities, and they bought over four-hundred companies in the last twenty years since they've been in existence.
That's great.
So they're looking for growth.
Sure. Well, that's what we're doing. We're growing. Is that, is that a bad thing, Tom? I, I'm finding hard to...
Well, I, you didn't answer my question. First is, what is your defensible market niche? And you said you didn't know.
Our, our defensive market for niche is our, is our local presence.
Well, I think in fairness, they, they put together marketing stuff, and it doesn't necessarily tie directly into you. You know, I will say, I am one of your CRS-acquired customers, and I've been very satisfied. I mean, I get that some people aren't happy, but personally, I'm very happy. The person picks up the cart very reliably, they make sure the lid's back down, they push it to the side. I mean, I've had good service. I don't know. And now, you and I, and of course Tara, we've struggled a little with our communications and getting contracts signed and all that. And I regret that that's gone on, cause now that I hear from you tonight, it's like, oh my gosh, I could've saved you a lot of time and mailed you that file that maybe one of the acquires didn't tell you existed. Uh, but whatever, you know, we'll figure that out. However we go forward, I'm happy to share that file with you and save you some time, cause we have it, cause we anticipated that very problem. But we didn't want you to have to defend our town boundaries with the customer. So you can look at that list and say, according to the town of Poetry, you are. Call, call the mayor if you got an issue.
That's great.
So we did put Mike on, uh, on all the solid ways since, um, you know, so he's been in charge of kind of getting, spearheading that with the vendors over the last couple of years. So, all right, so...
Does trash have to be bagged?
It's in, if it's in the cart, we're taking it. We'd like it for it to be bagged.
It has to be bagged? Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Jason.
How you acquired him?
Hey, I, I love this guy. This guy right here.
Jason, Jason Reed's golden, yeah. Jason Reed's golden. I think his route's been spot-on, but, um, there are two other routes now, so there's been some hiccups. Okay, so are there any other questions from council, comments? Okay. All right, thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, the third and last one for tonight, um, Brian from Titan. And Brian, what is your last name?
French.
French, Brian French, from Titan.
Thanks, sir. I hope you guys don't put me on the hot seat like you did him, cause I'm gonna fall apart. All right, so, uh, to get started here, our price is based on an exclusive contract. Uh, we base our price on at least a three-year contract. And that would be exclusive, sorry about that, excuse, exclusive with the four-hundred cus, four-hundred-and-fifty customers that was presented to us. Our company's grown a lot since we started with you guys. We started with, we're, we're one of the original companies that started with you. Uh, we've got, now we've got five thousand subscription, and we currently got seven thousand under contract. And we've got a three-thousand-person contract pending. So we've, we've had a lot of growth as well. There's a lot of growth coming to the area. Uh, one of our contracts is actually down here on Poetry Road. It's called Wildwood. There's gonna be four-hundred homes in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's building fast. So, uh, when we service this contract, currently, we service it on Wednesdays. We're gonna try to knock this out in one day, because we're already in the area, we're already covering majority of the town already. I think it's just gonna be a matter of mapping it properly to get this knocked out. Uh, if it has to go to two days, we will do it for two, two days, which would be either a Tuesday and Wednesday, or a Wednesday and Thursday. We're in the areas all three of those days, so we could easily split up and handle that. We have one person currently in the office that takes phone calls. She does a good job. She can be dry at times, but she's efficient. We also have, uh, email, and I have call tracking. So if anything's, that's missed, she's called, calls back. We have, the town hall is gonna be free. Any other town businesses that pop up, you guys will be free. We're also, it's not on here, cause we didn't proof this, but churches will also be free. Um, we have a safety program that does already include GPS tracking and cameras in all of our trucks. So if, if we have an issue, we can pull that up and look at it immediately. Uh, the rate increases are gonna be the same as the other guys. It's gonna be based on CPI and, and going forward. Since COVID has happened, nothing has really gone back to proper pricing. Everything's crazy. Nothing's going down. I don't care what they say. Here, we have the, all of our dumpsters are laid out here. Nothing's changed on that with you guys. Since we've been the vendor with y'all, we haven't had any increase. So for the two years that we've been contracted, we haven't had any increases with you guys. A few of the things that were, that we saw on, uh, the Poetry, I guess, public forum that I wanted to bring up. Some of it was about, um, I guess because Cards has taken up a lot of people. It was brought up that, that people haven't been in compliance. I followed rules the entire time. I've been in compliance the entire time. I've always paid our bills. You guys have our cellphone numbers. You have our email addresses. You can call us directly. And we try to stay on top of that, cause we don't, we don't wanna cause any issues with you guys.
I, I can concur. I mean, I can agree that that, that is actually factual. You, you did pay on time every single month. That was, he was the only vendor that actually did and, and provided the list, so that is factual.
Now, this is, if it is going to go to an exclusive contract, I think it should be completely exclusive. You guys have in here that Texas roll-off is currently allowed, which we have multiple vendors, so that's not a big deal. But if we go to exclusive, I'm going to request that that be exclusive. Because we make up our, some of our profits on the commercial side of that. So with our big construction containers, there's a, a better profit margin. So I am going to request that that is exclusive. So there was another issue that was brought up about some of the private roads that we don't service. Currently, we don't service, we service some private roads in Poetry. The ones that are maintained well enough that we don't destroy trucks when we go down. But some of these roads are, it's not feasible for us to drive a $250,000 truck down this road for one person. So we can't drive out of the way, beat up our equipment, and then get one person. So that will change with an exclusive contract. We won't exclude private roads. There's only one place, and Ashley would have the information on this, that we did get a call, and it's not too far from here. What's the name of the street, Ashley? Trail's End. It's like a wooden bridge. It's got a low archway. Our trucks will not go across that bridge. That's a danger for everybody, but we did tell the person we could service them. They just had to put the cans at the end of the street. So that would, there, there will be special instances where we can't take care of that. And it's going to be a safety issue. Other than that, if we have an exclusive contract, private roads don't matter. So this is kind of a question from me to you guys. What can be done about vendors that are in the town illegally? Because there's been more than one instance since we've been on this contract with you guys that it's happened, and it continued to happen. So if we're going to live by y'all's rules, what are, what are we going to do about these other people that come in? Because that's taken away from us and you.
So that, it is a problem. Do you want me to go ahead and answer now? Or you want to go ahead and finish your...
Oh, you can go ahead.
That has been a problem. We have sent cease and desist letters. And just recently, they have actually answered, which was encouraging. So we have seen some improvement in specific cases. I think with, an exclusive would actually help in that, I believe. Because then you, if you have one that you're supposed to be seeing in town and you see someone else in the area, you know, it, it just, it would, I think it would provide clarification, much needed clarification.
I agree. Just making sure I got everything knocked out here. So again, there was an issue that was brought up with upper management not answering their phones and not getting back with questions. Again, you guys got our cell number. You can call us anytime with issues. We can take care of it. We have no issue sending people back to pick up missed pickups. One of the reasons that we, we had the cameras put in was for that reason. Because you can't drive all over the country for hearsay. So anytime there's a missed pickup, we immediately check cameras. If it was out, we send drivers back. No questions asked. Uh, also with the, the road issues that you guys have, regardless of who you pick, I think we're all on the same page. All the vendors are on the same page with truck size. The less traffic on the roads, the better y'all's roads are going to be. These are county roads. I grew up on these type of roads. They're not maintained well by the county in the beginning. So if you've got six heavy-duty trucks running down these roads every week, it's not going to get any better. So regardless of who you got, who you guys go with, I think exclusive is the way to go to help save the roads. We've got a list in here of the neighborhoods that we currently service and our contracts. You guys are welcome to contact any of our people with the contracts. Uh, we deal mainly with muds and some of our other, our larger contracts. Uh, we also have the Town of Talte in here. We've been servicing the Town of Talte for 12 years now. No complaints. Every time the contract comes up, we're renewed. Our landfills, we use two landfills. Our main landfill is in Ferris, Skyline. It's one of the biggest ones around. The other one we use is in Garland. It's the City of Garland landfill. The City of Garland was not listed on here because we, we really only use it periodically when we're in this, in this side of town. And we need to run over there. All of our contracts are on Form A in the back, and a list from top to bottom. Uh, that's the ones where we have about 7,000 total under contract. And then the contacts for those contracts are in the next two pages, Tillich and the Kaufman County Freshwater Districts. Our insurance is closer to the last page. You guys have copies of that already. We update you guys as soon as we update ours. And then our fleet of trucks, the trucks that we run all the time, are 17 to 21 are our main trucks, so we do have a newer fleet. Our backup trucks are a little bit older. Some of the trucks that we first started with are still, still running good because we have a good maintenance program. We do run side loaders. We have four side loaders currently that we run. We also run rear loaders. Over here, right now, it's a rear loader, but whenever the Wildwood Edition picks up, that'll be a side loader. That, uh, those neighborhoods are designed for side loaders. It's quick pickup. They're stacked right on top of each other. Cycle time on those are about 11 seconds a can. So it makes it really efficient to come into a neighborhood and take care of it that way. Uh, with that being said, just like what the other guy said, you're going to have accidents with side loaders. It's just the, the nature of what it is. We had a can crush today. We replace it. It's our fault. We replace it. We set a can down too hard on concrete, breaks the wheel off, we replace it. We tear a lid off of a can because they face it the wrong way, we replace it. We take all lids and the cans, if they're under warranty, we use the same manufacturers. They have a 10-year warranty, so we just turn them in and have them warranty'd. I think that's about it for me. You guys have any questions for me?
If, if we can just finish working through your packet, what is the invoice from Waste Management?
Uh, that's just proof that we're using them as a dump site.
Okay. Uh, I hadn't asked anybody else, so we might have to go back. But how does side loaders work on these county, county roads with a, with a grid system like we have?
Well, that just depends on, on how you're set up. If we run a truck out here and it's not efficient, we'll pull it off.
Okay. Because you could possibly have to go down that road twice with a side pickup as opposed to where you might make a single direction and grab trash cans on both sides.
That's true. And that's why if it, if it's set up to where it's not going to be efficient for us to do that, we're not going to do it. Um, we pick up over here on Wednesday from Terrell, all the way to 30, and then down 276 all the way back into Rockwall. And we have four trucks over here on Wednesdays, so we can easily move them around. If this becomes to where, comes an issue where the, the side loader's not efficient, I'm not going to run it over here. These trucks are getting four miles a gallon on average, and I'm not going to have something over here running up down roads that's costing me money. Uh, and again, those side loaders are more money than rear loaders. So the, I mean, where they, where the magic is with the side loaders are those neighborhoods like Wildwood.
Sure, absolutely.
You know, we can go into Wildwood, 400 customers, and we'll be in and there at seven and be out by noon. When I run right now over here in Poetry, you know, we're only picking up about 60 people, but I'm driving all over the country. And they come over here at seven, and they're out of here at about noon. So that's why I'm saying we're already covering all of these roads over here to pick up our 60 people. So if we were to get the contract, we just need addresses that we can, so that we can come over and map it out. And I'll probably be the one mapping it out because I've been doing this for 25 years. So I'll be setting the map up for this place, and I'm going to want it to be efficient. Because I'm not a, I don't have a private equity fund. It's coming out of my back pocket. So I'm going to make sure that the roads are, are going to be efficient to run down. And hopefully, we don't run into a situation where the county roads are so rough that, or private roads so rough that we can't get down because it might be, we have to call you guys and go, hey, we're going to have to do something different here. So I'm going to make it as efficient as possible.
So you had the benefit of getting to put a lot of my questions into your presentation, so I appreciate that. But I did want to, I did want to go back and tell you thank you that we haven't ever had those issues with your, with your company. So that, that says a lot. To the push notification style, do y'all have anything like that now?
We don't currently have anything like that for texting. Um, we're, we do have it for email. So, and we put everything on our website, so if there's a, a holiday or inclement weather, we have pop-ups on our website. We have a database of emails. So if there is a, there's an email on file, we send out a mass email. Uh, we have been talking about the push notifications for, for texting because a lot of people do like that. It's just finding the right program that's going to work for us, uh, to get that going. Also, I didn't mention this, but, uh, all of our contracts that we sign up, we build a full webpage out for them, so that whenever they go to our webpage, there's a tab at the top, and they can click Poetry. And then that sends them over to another page that has all of the information for Poetry on it. So it'll have the pickup days, um, there's a contact page on there, there's, uh, links to bill pay on there. So they can just go to Poetry, and it runs them over and gives them all the information about Poetry.
So two easy questions. Bulk pickup? I might have missed it. Do you do bulk pickup?
We don't have a sculpt, scheduled bulk pickup. So if they need bulk pickup, they just need to call the office. So we don't, we don't run it to where it's once a month, um, because that will wind up putting that one day really far behind. So we just do it on an as-needed basis.
And the town has used them. It's 20, it was $25 to pick up a mattress that someone left on the side of the road, and they did pick it up that week. That was really nice.
Yeah, so, and, and something like that, if it's on the route, we need, and you need to go on, we just take care of it over there.
And out of fairness, is there a discount for a extended contract up to five years that you'd be willing to talk about right now?
No.
Okay.
No, because the, the, the pricing, if we give you a discount for a five-year contract, at the end of the year, we can get a notification from the landfill that they're going up 30%. Uh, we just can't guarantee a, a, any better pricing than this, so.
So on the rate schedule, for residential, it's 28, 24 a month, but then that's plus tax. Is that 28 include the franchise, or is that not? Okay, so the tax is just the county or the state or whatever, right? Okay, just making sure.
See, I have a question, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Probably you're going to have to, if you say you got the exclusive here, you'd have to invest in a lot of poly carts to take over. What about trucks? Do you have surplus capacity of trucks, or do you have to invest in trucks too?
We do have a surplus, uh, just because we have been signing all these other contracts up, so I've already started buying trucks. So, uh, we do have trucks to handle it. Uh, like I said, we already have a truck over here every Wednesday anyway, and we're only picking up 60 people. That truck has the capacity to pick up 450 people. So that truck alone should be able to handle it unless there's a lot on the, on the route that day. But with that being said, I've got three other trucks in the area. If one truck gets full, we'll send him to the landfill, and we'll send another truck over here to finish the job.
So your only real additional investment is, uh, poly carts?
I've got them already. Yep. I try to get, stay stocked up on them. So we have currently 350 on the yard right now that is set up to go out, and we have another 350 new sitting on the yard for whatever pops up.
So you're ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I will need that list, though, Mike.
Yeah, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
Well, and I would join in with Terry. I mean, the few times that you and I have interacted over the years, you've been very responsive, very compliant, and I appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
If there's an issue, let's talk. Let's not hide out, so.
No, I don't think we have a problem with that.
Nope.
The dumpsters do stand on what we've been doing already. We've offered free dumpsters for the cleanups. That will continue. I know that we've done whoever was donating the dumpsters at the time that were part of this contract. So if you guys had two dumpsters to clean up, it'll be two dumpsters of Titan. So I know we do a fall and a, um, spring cleanup, same thing. Be two dumpsters, two dumpsters, fall, two dumpsters, spring.
Any other questions from council? No, and I will reiterate, it's been, it is very refreshing to have a vendor who pays on time, provides the list, meets the terms of, of the agreement, so kudos to you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it, Brian. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes our three vendor presentations. The time is now 7:54. We're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, the time is now 8:01, and we're going to resume our meeting. We have just finished the solid waste vendor presentations, and now we're going to go on to our regular meeting with reports, as usual, our regular meeting. We have, um, the first report is the September end. So we have our deposits of $24,333.18 withdrawals and, and debits of $3,289, $3,289, and checks paid of $1,916.03. Our ending balance is $70,429.84. We still have 11 FEC checks outstanding of $591.47.
Tara, I think the ending balance date is incorrect.
Yes, I would agree with that. It looks like, um...
Typo.
It's a typo, so thank you. We will fix that.
It should be September 30th, 2023.
She has it at the top, correct. So it's September 31st, yes, 2023.
Uh, I thought September had 30 days. 30 days says September.
30, 30th. You're right. You're right, September 30th. So that is incorrect at the top as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that correction. We'll, we'll get that fixed. Okay, um, moving on, unless there's, a lot of this is, you know, we're just moved into our town hall, so we still have some repairs and, um, a few construction items still to do, so some of that is from all of that. So the second report is the sales and use tax report. You can see that, um, the September revenue was $9,172.70. The October revenue was $8,169.48. So in that road account that is allocated is $40,330.07. I did want to go ahead in full disclosure, um, we did have to submit our budget to both counties. When I was doing that, I wanted, I did consult with both the Mayor Pro Tem and, and the former Mayor Pro Tem. We did have a little typo, and, um, on that first page, instead of the 26, 783, 45 that was on the second page, it, it said 26, 183. So it was off, and it, it was a typo. But in full disclosure, I wanted to say that we did correct that, and now that has been filed with Hunt County. Kaufman's apparently wants wet ink, so for the third time, we're going to try and submit that as we are supposed to. Okay, um, then the TML report. So I attended, I had the opportunity to attend the Texas Municipal League, um, uh, conference, which was a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. It was October 4th, 5th, and 6th at the Cape Bailey Hutchinson Center. So there were thousands of people across the state who are public servants. Most of the ones I could tell were council members. There were mayors, city managers, um, judges. There were some in attorneys, municipal attorneys. I ran into, uh, one of our former municipal attorneys. And, um, but it was very good education. I couldn't attend all the, all the sessions that I would like to have attended, but it was very informative. And so I was very happy to go. It was $250, um, because we were membership, we are a member with them. It was less, but it was still $250 for the day. So I hope that our council members in the future will be able to take advantage of some of this education. It is, it is very, very good. I, I will pre, I guess, be presenting something that we learned from that next month, probably. So there are, they keep up with the current laws, and they also provide support for, um, our city leaders to help them be informed. And, um, I guess that is very good training. Okay, so on number four, the town hall. Town hall report, uh, I think Terry Fowler, Councilmember Fowler, wanted to report on this. Uh, I think Terry Fowler, council member Fowler, wanted to report on this. The most current one. I don't wanna release the labor or anything too long. We got a long night as it is.
So we called the state fire marshal's office, uh, and got an inspection, uh, and then we got another inspection. So if you see anything on the forum about official occupant loads, it has been changed. The newest occupant load is a total of forty-one people, uh, but it is now segregated. And each room is segregated and each room has a max occupancy level. Uh, the meeting room is twenty-eight people. The lobby is seven people. Front office is two, mayor's office is two, bathroom vestibule is two. During that inspection, the original one, they found that the fire extinguisher had to be serviced. It was done. Uh, we have a loose connection box outside that needs to be fixed and then a couple of housekeeping items that, that will be, uh, fixed sooner than later, but they're, they're just moving furniture around.
The box is done, Terry.
Okay. So everything except, is the housekeeping stuff done?
Yes, so, um, yes. So the, there was a chair in the way of the, of the electric panel that's been moved. And then the other, we've ordered a firebox and it's gonna be here any day. So.
So I guess the, the pertinence of this inspection is, is it has been in fire inspected. It has passed with corrections. Uh, the, uh, I guess the only item of business or discussion here is, is that y'all do realize that we have occupancy load per building, per, per room now?
Yes, so we have modified the room as, as per the report, and there's plenty of room for.
The only other thing I think we should discuss is, is really, I think, is a reduction in the number from the front office, mayor office, and vestibule, bathroom vestibules. The offices pertain confidential information, so therefore I don't think citizens should be allowed in there. And you can't count the bathrooms. Obviously, we're using them. So.
It's not the bathroom. It's the entryway in front of the bathroom. Yeah.
So back to the egress issues, but yeah, but regardless, uh, the, the offices, I think, should be off limits to citizens during the meeting.
Well, if you have a locked file cabinet, that shouldn't be a problem. But I, I don't think that we'll need that. I really don't. I don't think we need to open up to the offices.
And then I guess Kevin's provided an evacuation map plan. Uh, I think it, it's done well. Kevin, thank you for that. Maybe a little bit overkill, but sometimes more is, okay.
The state fire marshal liked it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot. I've seen these from state fire marshal's offices. So, uh, I think we'll probably post one by the front and back door just so.
It's already done. Yep. We've already got it posted.
Your build, your town hall has passed fire inspection, everybody.
Okay.
Good job.
Alright.
Yay. A lot of hard work in that. Okay, so, um, moving on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes from September twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting. Is there any comment? Or actually, can't comment.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion by council member Jaffe, seconded by Blake. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Alright, so secondly, on the consent agenda is our legal bill of fourteen hundred and eighty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. He did attend the meeting, and so that accurately reflects the extra time. So, um, is there a motion to accept?
I move to approve.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Fowler, seconded by White. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to agenda item one. Discuss and take action on solid waste vendor ordinance. We do have from our attorney, um, you know, the amendment that, you know, we, we spent all that time and legal money two years ago, so we feel like, we tweaked it a couple of times. We feel like it's, it's decent enough. However, it was free market, um, with the same requirements, then the amendment would then make it exclusive. Um, except for, I believe, the way it's worded, residential, but not for commercial. Is that right? But not for commercial, the, and that was essentially for the, 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 uh, larger roll-offs. Alright, so.
Are you saying that's what it was or that's what it should be?
That's what the amendment, did, did everyone get the amended ordinance? Um, it's just a page and, or two, three, four pages? It came, it came on Monday, I believe. So we have. You have it? Okay.
I've got an eleven page and then I've got the ordinance itself, which is.
Now, this is, yes, yes. I think Teresa made copies for you. So this is the one from twenty twenty-one. This, the one that is blank. Yeah, it's amending the ordinance from twenty twenty-one. Okay. So does everyone have a copy of that? You have the original one in twenty-one, and then we have the, the amended.
And amended is for the four pages with the last page being just as a signature?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we've heard from three of the vendors. I will say that I did get a sample letter of how, how it goes about from one of, one of the vendors who wasn't here tonight. He, I looked in my files. I'm like, I know I've had this from two years ago, and I did, indeed I did, and I can give that to you. It's kind of a sample letter to citizens, like, so when you're gonna have a change, how you can communicate with your, your citizens on that. And so, um, I made a copy for the, for the council on that. And there's also another one for vendors. And again, this was from, um, Ameritex, how they do it whenever you have, um, a change for the area. Cuz you know, when they get exclusive, it happens all the time, they have to communicate with the citizens and say, hey, um, it's no longer free market. It's going to exclusive. And they have sample letters on how to do that. Um, in this one, he gave five weeks' notice. Um, I think probably our people may want a little bit more than that. But, um, that's certainly one of the items, you know, to discuss, I would think.
Tara, can you direct me in the proposed to the statement where it says, uh, this, it excludes commercials? Where's that at?
Number three, under section A, commercial, non-residential collection. And, and that bring, uh, I think Brian was the one that brought it up.
Well, I guess my question is, why did we carve that out? I mean, what was, we, we've not discussed this up until this moment.
We haven't, and so that's certainly open for. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the logic was, just so.
Yeah, no, my understanding was that it, first of all, let me apologize for not getting the ordinance sooner. Um, there's one week out of the, out of every month where I'm completely out of pocket, and that was last week. So I didn't get it to you guys in time to get it in the agenda packet, but you should have it now. Wow, all of a sudden it came on. It simply amends section two of our existing ordinance. Um, our existing ordinance, if you look at it, it's twenty twenty-one dash ten dash zero one. And section two has two subsection As. So what this does is it consolidates both of them into one. Um, a, and it's residential only, not commercial. My understanding is we were just talking residential, not commercial. Um, so, so I wrote that into the ordinance. Um, they would amend it so that residential only, it's exclusive. Um, to the extent that we have existing permits and existing franchise ordinances or agreements, they got thirty days' notice of termination. Um, I'm not sure if you guys are ready to adopt this tonight. I mean, in theory, you could. Um, but you're gonna need citizens' input because we haven't had citizens' input yet. But if you were to do it tonight, it would have to be effective at some point down the road. You gotta give at least thirty days' notice to existing vendors. And so, so you guys have the presentations from your proposals, and so you're, you're in good shape to act on it whenever you want. But I, it would, it would have to be effective at least thirty days from now to give us time to give notice to the existing vendors and revoke their existing agreements. Any questions about that?
So what I heard was there was nothing strategic about separating out. You just sort of felt like that was the direction we'd been going.
I thought that's what we were doing.
Well, I, I asked them to, and the reason I did is we have a hometown, um, a, a person who lives in Poetry, who has the commercial roll-off, Texas Contractors, is a local person. So knowing, and we, we don't have to do that, but I just felt that knowing the council, they seem to really be about the hometown person. So I just carved that out.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for that, but I think it's just my personal point of view. We're just complicating it. And I appreciate what, I think it was Brian, said that they're gonna make up some of their profit on the bigger stuff. So.
Yeah, and that may have been my misunderstanding as well, but you can do it, you can make both of them.
Well, and too, we're gonna have lots of extra trucks running around. I don't know. It just seems weird, but.
Well, and I think, um, the current, he's new. Um, I think there was this last quarter, there's only one. So it's not like it's not gonna break his bank, but this just shows that it, it is possible to do that. And I think that's one reason I wanted in there so that the council can decide otherwise, but it, at least it's possible to do it. Thank you.
Mr. Byron, before you sit down, uh, you, you said we could, we could pass this, uh, and, and put it in a date, at a further date.
Yes.
Should we have more conversation before we pass this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Cuz we may not go with an exclusive vendor after we weigh the numbers. So.
No, yeah.
I think this is good for review, and then it could supplement the.
The way that the agenda is written is that you do have the authority or the ability to act on it this evening if you want to.
Okay.
From my perspective, going from, uh, a free market to exclusive is something that, I mean, in some cities, it's pretty controversial.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if you wanna rush into it or not. I mean, you can if you want. You, you have the authority tonight. But you may wanna get input from citizens first.
Well, we do have citizens, so if it's okay with everybody, um, Christina Wallace?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for hearing me. Um, is that better?
Yeah, okay.
No.
Can she move that closer? Do you want me to move this? Okay, there we go. I am one of those citizens that it's not a free market for. I am, um, been cornered by the cards monopoly.
I'm generally a pretty happy, easygoing person, never complained about trash in my life. Um, but I have not had a smooth experience with cards, and I just wanted to express, um, what it looks like for me. I have a large family. Um, I, we use our trash bin exactly, um, and I temper that knowingly. Um, and for example, this week, it's supposed to be Tuesday, nobody showed up. Actually, I watched them drive by my trash truck, by my trash can. They slowed down. They did not pick it up, and they kept going. I immediately called, uh, the Arkansas contact I have, cuz that's my best contact. And she dispatched immediately, and they never came back till today. Well, I had several trash bags collecting in my home. I'm a foster home. That's really bad. So it's really important to me, um, to maintain the sanitary conditions. Um, I'm excited to see that Blackjack and Titan, my two interactions with them, are very positive. There's my feedback.
Thank you, Christina. Dale Bryant? Uh, Tracy Hibbs?
Tracy Hibbs, County Road twenty-four thirty-two. Thanks for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, so I'm a little confused on some things. So we were talking about commercial. So what is commercial trash? What does that mean? So is that like, I live next to Lori and David, so they have waste connections that come to their place of business. Is that what we're referring to as trash? Commercial trash?
Isn't typically, I don't wanna speak. It's usually a dumpster or a roll-off for commercial, usually.
Yes, I'm right. Okay. Can, does anybody know what the percentage of the franchise fees are?
Residential's about twenty-three percent.
And so the going rate in other cities is about seven percent?
Yes.
Okay. Um, private roads who are not in the city limits, how would you separate the franchise fees on those individuals?
We have about six roads that are in our city limit, but on the ones that are not, they wouldn't be paying.
So they're not, so are they gonna service those roads also?
Well, that would be up to them, but.
Okay. So like past.
If we're picking up on a road that's close to her, and she's on the private road, as long as we have people in the area, we'll still service that road. My input earlier was, we're just not gonna drive five miles within one person's body.
That makes logistical sense.
Yeah, that does. So like anybody.
The rule is they can't do business in our town. If it's, they can't drive through here. If, for your, for your road, for instance, anybody past y'all, Waste Management, ISI, and all them, we can't keep them off our road.
I understand. I understand. I, I, that was another clarity. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Chad West? Mrs. Smith? Okay. Glenn Strauss? Okay. Alright, that's all our citizen input. So.
So as it pertains to this ordinance, I don't know that we should talk about it, but, but Tracy brings up a good point when we start talking about exclusivity and, and all that. Is, is, are we, initially, and I brought this up early, we, we started this to fund our city. Uh, now unfortunately, our budget is now built off these same numbers. So, uh, in the future, I definitely could see giving our citizens some relief with that as we've supplemented our, our income with, uh, sales tax. But yeah, I, I've heard that number before, and that's pretty astonishing that our, our citizens are paying, uh, three hundred percent more franchise fees than others.
But they don't pay any property tax at all. So the saying two years ago was, okay, I'd rather you tax my trash than my property. So that's why we're built that way.
It is. Uh, we are paying quite a bit though, um, in price overall, which is why I think we should consider the franchise agreement, especially because, you know, the economy's not exactly booming right now, and it can be important to a lot of people to save some money. And I've gotta say, at least for me, these prices that they're sending out are, you know, a decent bit cheaper than what we're paying individually. The exclusive would save people some money. I think that especially matters for our elderly population, which is a decent bit, many of them on fixed incomes. So I think this might help with the high costs.
So Simeon, you said something, and I wanted to clarify, how much were you charged or how, when you were quoted, um, when you were trying to get trash service for your new home?
Oh, I've been paying forty-five dollars a month, and that's with the discount from auto pay. Without auto pay, it's fifty dollars, and that's one poly card.
Wow, that's too much.
Yeah, it's a lot. Yeah.
That's too much.
So this is much better.
So I know that we did have numerous citizens even two years ago who were very disappointed that we, and I mean, it, it seemed right, I think, at the time. Um, but if we can save our citizens, my goodness, that's twelve dollars savings for.
And I mean, that's why the original group, we had that research group who looked into it of citizens. It was like three or five citizens, something like that. And they suggested we go exclusive, which I think we made the right decision for the time, but you know, the points that they made are still valid.
Well, I did, um, one, the last mayor's lunch I attended, I did ask all the mayors in the room, um, if their town had exclusive, and every one of them did. And it's for this exact reason. You know, currently, we almost have an exclusive. We have two vendors. One has close to sixty, the other one has the rest of it, right? But we're not getting the benefit of that. So why, I, I feel like maybe we're ready now, but let's give our citizens the benefit. Let's give them the lower price. Let's get, keep the, all the traffic, or at least minimize the traffic on our roads and, um, you know, pull that Band-Aid off. You know, it's.
Well, it truly is exclusive for some people. I mean, the citizen that got up and mentioned it is not the only one that I've heard talk about it. You know, Titan can't service everybody because of logistics, so that leaves just card. So.
Well.
Tara, I was, I'm probably one of the reasons that Ameritex left here thinking we were cranky because back when we talked about this originally, there was an exclusive proposed, and I don't think, as Simeon noted, we were quite ready for that, right? So, uh, I don't know that they felt loved. Um, but having said that, now, two and a half years later, we're revisiting this for, I think, reasonable reasons. Just for the record, I am not a fan of splitting it out. To me, trash is trash. And if we bring somebody into our town for an exclusive, it needs to be one vendor and that's it, period. So I'm in. So, I'm in favor of a rewrite of at least that part of this, um, add-on that says, you know, there, we're gonna give them a contract and allow them to make money. I don't have a problem with them making money, I don't dislike Kevin and his business, but I just think fair is fair. So we need to give them an opportunity to, uh, be profitable.
I agree.
And I think it also passes on to our average residential person some savings, which is a good thing.
Agreed, yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing some agreement, that's good. Um, so, I, I do have to say that, um, uh, Titan, they have purple trucks. Our town color's purple, I'm female, I can't help it. I've told them that from the beginning, but I also, in, in all kidding aside, um, they have been here two and a half years, they, they've done what they were supposed to do. They've paid on time. Um, the only hiccup that I've seen with them is they, because of logistics, they haven't been able to serve certain roads, but if they had an exclusive, I feel like they could remedy that. So, um, I, I feel like that maybe we are ready. Um, I granted, I'm all about communication, I think we should communicate highly with our citizens, let them know that, you know, if the council chooses to go that direction, we, we don't just surprise it on them, and that's, um, been one of the things that I've been hearing. I've get, I've been getting an earful for the last six, eight weeks, it's not been fun. I was at TML conference, and I sat thirty minutes in a parking lot while, you know, I was getting reamed about trash, you know? So, um, I've been getting an earful about very frustrated, very frustrated people, and so I haven't had any complaints, um, from Titan. And because they've serviced our town faithfully for, I, I'm inclined to, you know, reward them with that, now.
Are we considering the contracts right now, or the ordinance?
Well, it's the same thing, the ordinance has the franchise agreement as exhibit A.
Are we gonna open this up for?
Right, but I, I don't think we're discussing our selection, I think we're discussing an ordinance that will apply to whoever we select, and I, for one, would not want us to lean. I mean, I appreciate each of the people that came and presented tonight.
We need to call the references.
And I'm, I'm not going to, here and now, make a decision or even say things that would lean one way or the other, because I think, you know, in poor Jason's favor, I mean, I, I have been a part of companies that have been acquired and that acquire, and I understand the complexity and some of the stumbles and all of that. So, you know, there might be a lean to say, well, let's beat him up, but, you know, Blackjack hasn't even been in our town, in fact, there were some people that were angry at them because they were bringing roll-offs in when they weren't supposed to be, and blah, blah, blah. Anyway, I, I don't think we should be weighing in on which way we're leaning, I think we've made our comments about, you know, our concerns, and just leave it at that.
Then what are we doing here?
We're talking about rewriting the ordinance to be an exclusive.
Well, I know, but, I, I know, but I feel like we just need to pull that Band-Aid off.
Well, but this doesn't say select a vendor, so it's not the appropriate item.
Doesn't say select a vendor or order contracts.
Okay, so.
I think if you get this right.
Yeah, and then we apply it to whoever we select in a separate agenda.
We do have to call the, um, the references and the like, which, I mean, Terry mentioned, and I absolutely agree with. I mean, we just gotta dwell on this and chew on it, and I'm gonna talk to my neighbors and the citizens I've been in contact with and get their thoughts on it.
I mean, David is our attorney, do you have any thoughts different than that, or? And you told us you think we need to think about the ordinance.
This is actually a kind of a big step, you know, and, and so, uh, my, although you could adopt the ordinance tonight if you wanted to, and select a vendor tonight if you wanted to, I, I, I do think you really need to think about it, I think, we've got a meeting coming up, what, next week, I think? Um, I don't know if that's too soon either, you know, but no matter what happens, you, you were, nothing can, the switch can't take place for at least thirty days. We, we've gotta give notice to existing vendors, so you can, I, I think it's a good idea for you guys to look at the ordinance, to process it, um, consider the proposals that you received tonight, then come back later on. I think first step, you know, Mike, you had it right, first step is, do we go exclusive or not? Second step is if we do, then who, who are we gonna pick, so.
Well, and in fairness to the vendors, they've, they've made an investment in our community, and they've worked hard and all of that, and I appreciate and don't underplay the, the frustrations of the people that are having, um, bad experiences, but I don't think that's like the majority of the people, it's some people, and those people are important. Um, but I just, I don't want us to be a town that just sort of, you know, we just throw them out in two weeks' time and move the other, 'cause then nobody's gonna wanna bid on our work, because it's like, well, you guys aren't very committed, you know, you change quickly. So I think, to me, this only surfaced in the last few months, I know we've been trying to get contracts for a while, but it really wasn't made apparent that, hey, if this contract doesn't happen, we're changing next month. So I think in fairness, we need to give this a little time in everybody's awareness that we can say, okay, now I'm thinking about changing vendors, I'm thinking about whatever, so I think if, I don't think next month would be, uh, too far out, because it, it, you know, I want some time, I'm, like I said, I'm not making a decision tonight, great proposals, love the material, but I, I couldn't in good conscience make a decision, I would feel like I'd jerk somebody around, and that's not right.
Your choice, your choice, make a motion.
Well, Mr. Berman, I do have a question on that, is, is that if, say, we're picking somebody for probably five years.
Three to five.
Three to five year con- a long time, so if we ran into a problem, how do we get out of it? In other words, is, is there a cause or convenience clause that says?
I, I, I will be reviewing and probably revising the existing franchise form agreement that we're currently using. Um, a- and I will include provisions that will allow, that will set rates, um, that will set the franchise fee percentage, that will set rates, that will only allow increases capped at five percent based on CPI increases, uh, and that will include other provisions that will, uh, hopefully ensure some kind of accountability. Um, but, you know, I, I, I typically do add termination for convenience clauses, vendors typically reject them, but I add them in anyway, so.
But what about termination for cause, for, there's cause and convenience, what about for cause?
Uh, cause is always a basis for termination.
Right.
Even if the contract doesn't say so.
With a cure period, they have to be given an opportunity to cure.
Well, curing, a, a cure period in solid waste collection contracts is problematic, you understand, because you, you, you've got one vendor who's gonna have dozens and dozens of, of customers. They got one customer who, who, um, doesn't get picked up, then you, you're gonna give them thirty days to pick up that person's trash? I mean, so, there are contracts that will impose a set of, a schedule of penalties, basically. Um, in, in the event that they don't pick up, if the complaint isn't resolvable in certain periods of time, uh, and we can talk about that later if we wanted to.
So that'd be the issues of cause, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we, you, all contracts can be terminated for cause.
Well, I guess, because, right, but you, you gotta know what cause is, and I guess that's my question.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So I, I guess I'm to the point, uh, Tara, where I say, yeah, it's a three to five year contract, we need to take a little time and, and discuss it more and make sure, 'cause we're making a pretty hefty commitment, and whether it's terminated for cause or convenience, it's still could be costly and time-consuming, and not nice.
Just as a point of clarification, David, so the, the document we have, for some reason, I don't have it in my deck, the proposed, uh, add-on is, is not like what you would call your best and final, because what I think I just heard you say is, I would write some additional things in.
Into the franchise agreement itself, you understand how, how this works, is that we have a, we have an ordinance that imposes a set of conditions, and the ordinance, it, the ordinance provides for a franchise agreement on top of the ordinance itself. The order, the, the agreement will contain additional provisions, and that's what I'm talking about when I say, the other things will be added to it.
So you would modify the, the exhibit A?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we don't even need exhibit A, I mean, we're gonna have a franchise agreement with a vendor, a- and, and we're not gonna have a form that we're gonna use with, you know, five or six different ones, and so there's just gonna be one. One agreement that we'll talk about later in some detail.
Okay, so.
So, I'd like to hear from council, how many of you feel like we, um, you'd, you'd rather go with exclusive in all of it versus?
Well, can I make a motion, and then we'll see?
You can.
Okay, so I make a motion that we change the wording in the, uh, proposed addendum to be for all trash pickup, not separating out, uh, commercial and residential, and also that we have our attorney, um, provide us with a modified franchise agreement that he believes would, uh, is that not what you want me to word it? You're making weird faces. Oh, you're reading your email, okay. Okay, yeah, so that we, we, uh, have our atti- we direct our attorney to, um, propose back to us a modified franchise agreement to go coincident with that, uh, updated ordinance that will provide necessary cures and penalties and whatevers.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion, very long by Jaffe, uh, second is by White, all those in favor? And it looks like that passes unanimously. So, with that said, I will say, um, that I personally have had, um, a good, um, experience with, um, cards taken over by Reed. Um, he is golden, golden, and so that is very appreciated, um, but when we're looking at the whole city, we have to do what's best for all of our citizens. All right, so, um, moving on to item number two, discuss and take action on definition of voter in poetry in light of SB twenty thirty-eight. So we had a couple petitions, um, submitted, and I thought, you know, we really probably need to talk about this a little bit, not that we can change it, but we need to clarify. So these, these petitioners are aware, and, and everyone is aware of, um, you know, if it changes anything, it did bring up that question in a lot of folks' minds. So went just out there and clarify it, and that's, that's why that's on the agenda. So, and we probably should hear from our attorney on that.
Yeah, and I believe, Mr. Berman, if you could explain simply what SB twenty thirty-eight is.
Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight amends Texas Local Government Code, um, to enable, specifically Chapter, um, forty-two, um, forty-two, to enable, um, property owners to compel the release of their property from cities extraterritorial jurisdiction.
ETJ only?
ETJ only.
Okay.
Not city limits, they cannot compel disannexation, that must be made really, really clear.
Yes.
So historically, the legislature in Texas has, uh, in its apparent dislike for cities, um, limited the scope and the authority of cities to annex, um, a- a- and to take control or to expand their city limits, and this is just, you know, another step in that same limiting the authority of most cities in Texas. Um, we can no longer annex property unless we own it, um, or unless we have a petition from the property owner with an agreement. Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight amends Chapter forty-two to say that a property owner can, um, submit a petition if it's in compliance with Chapter two seventy-seven of the Election Code that will compel a, a, a release of their, of their territory, of their property from our extraterritorial jurisdiction. Y'all understand that our ETJ only exists, it's an aura around our existing territorial limits in which we have limited regulatory authority. Um, it, it also sets, at, at least historically, it sets, it used to set the boundaries of our ability to annex, 'cause you could not annex property unless it was in your ETJ, but since we can't annex anymore, that goes out the window. Um, a- and so, if a proper petition is submitted, the city must, or a, a city must, number one, verify the petition immediately, and then, number two, act on the petition within certain timeframes. If we do not act on a petition within those requisite timeframes, and the longest one is forty-five days of the day that it was submitted, then it's automatically deemed to be approved, and the territory is released by operation of law. The biggest concern that I have in connection with any petition, and believe me, Poetry is not the only town that's been getting these kinds of petitions, once this became effective last September, the biggest concern must be, um, the legal description of the territory. Yeah, I, I've seen some petitions in other towns that questionably sought to effectively disannex property that was in that city's limits, not just the ETJ. All right, the statute requires, number one, a meets and bounds description, uh, number two, it requires a map. We've got, I think the initial submissions didn't have a proper meets and bounds descriptions, but that was supplemented. Um, the maps we've got are, you know, I, I, I'm not going to say that they're really not very good maps, because, and looking at them, you know, what I, what I would be looking for is a map that shows exactly what territory is to be released, and I don't really see that in the maps, you know? Um, those types of, of, um, technicalities can be overlooked. Um, the statute also requires that a petition, which is what, these are not an election, because that's a different subpart, but a petition for, for, um, release must comply with the requirements of Chapter two seventy-seven of the Texas Election Code. That's an election petition. Petitions that I've seen submitted by law firms in other cities that represent developers are like petitions for relief in a court, or in, in, in an administrative tribunal, they're completely wrong. It's an election code petition, which among other things must contain the signer's date of birth or voter registration number, which is absent from these two petitions. Those are technicalities, you can choose to overlook that and grant the request to release the property from your ETJ, or you can compel, or you can deny the petition, a- and compel them to resubmit, so long as the petition is in the proper form. That make sense? Now, I got another city where, where, maybe, yeah, even us, 'cause we're gonna deal with this next week. The petitioner, the property owner is an entity, a corporation, um, they don't have dates of birth, and they don't have voter registration numbers. The way that the statute is written, i- it's required, and so we may choose to compel adherence, compliance with that requirement, which would mean that all corporate owners would never be able to release their property from the territory, from our ETJ, unless it was done in conjunction with other property owners, um, a- as a group.
I like it.
Um, not individual property owners, that make sense? One property owner can compel the release of their territory from our ETJ. A group of property owners can submit a petition, as long as the majority and value of the property, um, are in favor of it, and sign a petition, then a, a larger territory, a larger area can be released from our ETJ. That's the only way that I read a corporation being able to get by the, the Election Code requirements. In other cities, um, the fact that the date of birth or voter registration number is missing from an individual's petition, um, may or may not be critical. You know, understand that, that our ETJ, we now have very limited regulatory authority in our ETJ, we don't, we're not even regulating subdivisions in our ETJ. The only thing that a city can regulate in their ETJ nowadays anyway is, excuse me, imposing subdivision regulations, and for us, Kaufman County's gonna be doing that. If the territory is released from our ETJ, Kaufman County will continue to assume subdivision regulatory authority. The only other difference is, if hypothetically, a municipal utility district, um, sought to compel, um, the creation of a mud that included that ETJ territory, if it's within our ETJ, we have the ability to object to it with TCEQ. If it's not within our ETJ. If it's not within our ETJ, we got no say-so, no say-so at all. Y'all, y'all understand that, I don't know if the property owners that are submitting these petitions do or not. If their territory is no longer, if any of their property is no longer within our ETJ, and someone attempts to create a municipal utility district and include their territory into that mud, we have no say-so at all.
And you're saying our only say-so is going through TCUQ because they're in our ETJ?
If they're in our ETJ, a, a, a mud, in order to create a mud that exists within our ETJ, we have the authority to object to it.
Okay, you've given us a lot of, a lot of information, um, I think, um, if we can bite it one at a time here. Um, you did explain SB twenty thirty-eight, um, the item on the agenda is definition of voter in light of that, so can we?
Well, so, so, although I know that you've talked to legislators about this.
I did.
And, uh, to be a voter, you, you have to be registered, and registration is based on where you live in connection with our territorial limits. ETJ has nothing to do with it, it's not a relevant consideration.
It's not, exactly.
I mean, if you live in, if you live in the city, in the town limits, or if you live on a piece of property that
contiguous.
is partly within our town limits, and you make the election, then you're a voter, regardless of whether or not there's an ETJ.
So just wanted to clarify, my understanding was as well that it doesn't change the definition of voter, if they're in one territory versus another, they get to still choose.
Yes.
So that hasn't changed, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right.
Um, so, um, thank you so much, um, we have some citizens.
Well, I've got questions for him.
Okay.
Sit down.
Okay, well, all right, so definition of voter, is there, you have other questions for our attorney, okay?
Yes, I do, because you, you said, according to the two seventy-seven Election Code, you have to be a registered voter, we could overlook that, but that's what.
It's a technicality that you can.
It's a technicality, so you're telling me the state of Texas is saying that you have to be a registered voter in the state to release your land?
The state of Texas, the way that the statute reads is that in order for there to be a petition, and in, in this circumstance, if there's only one property owner, as opposed to multiple, because if there's one property owner, a petition must comply with Chapter two seventy-seven of the Election Code. because if there's one property owner, a petition must comply with Chapter 277 of the Election Code. The signature on the petition, don't have to be a registered voter, you have to have a date of birth if you don't have a voter ID number. An election petition to be valid must contain either a voter ID number.
Either, not both.
Right, exactly.
Either, either what?
You must, for an election petition to be valid, it must contain, among other requirements, a voter ID number or a date of birth. Either or. They substitute for each other, but there's a bunch of other requirements, just that one requirement that can't be met by a corporation.
Yeah, that was just a hangup that you had to have, be a registered voter and I'm like, no, there's no way. Okay.
Okay.
I need some clarification. In the bill analysis, I want to read this to you. Residents and property owners who are, this is background and purpose. Residents and property owners who are subject to municipal regulatory authority in extraterritorial jurisdiction of municipalities have no vote or voice in municipalities that regulate them. Okay, if it's somebody that lives in the ETJ and they're, they have, they don't have a vote because they're not in the city.
Yes.
But they are a registered voter, but they have no vote because they're not in the city.
Oh, you're mixing and matching.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm trying to.
So, all right.
If they have a vote.
Here in poetry, we have hybrid properties. That's unusual.
Yeah.
In most areas, you have a piece of property that is either within a city's limits or is not in the city's limits or is in the city's ETJ. If you have a piece of property that is solely, if you live on a piece of land that's only within a city's ETJ, the only authority that a city has over you is subdivision regulation. But you're not a city limit, or you're not, since you don't live in the city limits, you don't get to vote, you don't get to run for office.
And this would apply?
Well, doesn't matter, no, actually, what this does now is if you're in our ETJ, you're subject, you would be subject to a city's subdivision regulatory authority. If you exercise your right under 2038, that subdivision regulatory authority just goes away. That's all that happens.
Okay.
Well, you're under the jurisdiction of the county.
That you are then under county authority, exactly.
But if you have a vote, does this apply to you?
If you have a vote, you live in the city limits. Or, or you live on a piece of property that extends partly into the city limits and you've made the election to be a voter.
But, but they said they did this for people that don't have a say or vote. If you have a say or vote, how does this apply to you?
It doesn't, well, it doesn't.
Well, and.
And that legislative analysis doesn't make any sense and doesn't make, doesn't matter.
So, I know in talking to Representative Keith Bell, he stated that he thought it was only applied to twenty thousand in population or more, but that isn't in the actual bill.
If they forgot to say it, then.
Yeah, so.
Then it kind of doesn't apply.
So, and actually, and I also talked on Tuesday with the Attorney General's Office with Ann and she said, you know, it really probably needs to be amended. There's some things wrong with it as stated. But yeah, they, that won't happen until probably March of 2025 because they only meet every other year. And so, you know, anyway, there's some others.
There's a number of statutes that the legislature adopted the last session that they made mistakes. Just outright mistakes and this is likely one of them. I think from our perspective, this is not a monumental change. If people want out of our ETJ, oh, okay.
I don't see how it really benefits them.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't have any effect on us either, I mean, either way.
This is my hypothesis on that. I think it does. So, so first, the state passed the House bill that says that cities can't, can no longer annex, right? You stated that.
Yep.
To me, this is the backup document that allows people out of the ETJ. So when, when the House or Senate does change it, because it will change and gives the power back to the city, they're no longer in the ETJ, therefore they can't be forcefully annexed.
You're assuming that, that if annexation statutes are amended, which is really not likely, number one, that they would amend it to restrict the scope of annexation to an ETJ, which is what we've done in the past. It doesn't mean that that's how we're going to do it in the future.
Right.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And so, to be honest with you.
There's a level of protection there, though, that if they don't clearly state that, you have been removed from the ETJ, therefore you're not in their annexation power any longer.
We didn't have any anyway.
We didn't, but other cities, this, this bill wasn't written for poetry.
No, it wasn't, but it's written for a whole bunch of cities that are just like Poetry, that are within our exact same circumstance.
And that's just my hypothesis, I hadn't read anything on that, but I can see where it allowed, disallow the power of the city later.
If the statutes are changing, the statutes change. We know, we deal with the law when they come out with it. But you know, the annexation statutes in Texas, every few years, there's been complete overhauls. And then beginning about four sessions ago, the legislature has incrementally made it more and more difficult until finally, until finally, if they had done the last, the last change that made, that prohibited annexations, they'd done it at the very beginning, it would have, it would never have passed. But that's how they're doing it. They do, they do it incrementally over a period, over a number of different sessions until finally we're at the point now where we can't annex at all unless the property owner petitions us, so.
And who knows? I mean, legislation might change that takes back that ETJ and all well, one fell swoop where we get the whole bubble back and nobody has a say. I mean, it can swing both ways, no doubt.
Yeah, I want to believe that the legislation might stop hating cities so much and might begin to be a little bit more friendly.
Well, and I have to say, I blame this on the bloated bureaucracies of the cities. I mean, I loathe that and I think a lot of people have suffered from bloated bureaucracies of cities and they feel pummeled by them. And so we want to, we don't want to be that and that turns my stomach. So I, I kind of understand that, you know, they have their citizens, citizens across the state have been complaining about that and the legislature, that sounds a little Pollyanna, but I think also developers are also in this pocket of all this, but.
Developers have a much stronger lobby.
Yeah, they do.
A lot of the legislators that attend legislative sessions in Austin are looking at Austin City Council and the city of Austin's government as the example of all cities throughout Texas and they're just as weird as anywhere else, I mean. So.
David, you, you made a comment much earlier in the discussion of the 2038 about the map. Were you talking about the city's burden to produce a map or the petitioner's burden?
The petitioner has the obligation to provide a meets and bounds description, specifically meets and bounds or a lot block in addition if it's a subdivided, in a subdivision, which it's not. They must provide a meets and bounds description and a map of the area to be released.
But do you think as a city, I mean, I'm looking at Local Government Code forty-one, zero, zero, one and two, which burdened the city upon establishment with coming up with a survey and all of that. I mean, we, we created artificial lines across people's property when we became a town.
Sure.
It's not like we all had in our files a survey of the part that's in the town and out. So isn't, don't you think a court would hold that this, it's the burden of the city to produce those coordinates or those meets and bounds or whatever to show where Mike Jaffe's ETJ land is?
I can't believe you're saying that, sorry, I just.
The answer's no.
Yeah.
The answer's no.
I think it's, I'm not, I'm not voting for or against anybody, I'm just saying it's, it's, the way I read it, I'm just reading the law. The way the law reads, it sounds like we're supposed to have coordinates.
We do when we incorporate, of course, but the statute, 2038 specifically puts that burden on property owners. It's a component, a necessary requirement of a petition, yeah.
But to my point, where's the starting point if we don't have a survey from the town?
Okay, so these are petitioners.
Where's the starting point? Where do I draw my line at?
Yeah, you got to have references.
I got to have a survey from the city that tells me where they cross my property.
Right, well, we've got, we've got.
We already have the meets and bounds, but I was realizing that, okay, I think that on these two exhibits that we have from the petitioners, that they gave their whole property survey and it's not, and I guess we could ask them. I don't believe it's the specific survey from just the ETJ of their area. That would be on, the owners would be on them to provide it. And until you said that tonight, it didn't click with me, I didn't understand what you were saying and now I apologize for that. But I just, I realize now what you're saying, this is their entire property, which is, some of this is in the town, whereas the part that they want to extricate is only the ETJ portion.
They only have the authority to compel the release of that part of their property that is within our extraterritorial jurisdiction, not within our town limits. This is not a disannexation ordinance.
And this is already tied up a lot of secretarial time, a lot of legal time, and these are the, you know.
I just don't know how we can.
That's a cost to do in business.
Yeah, what do, how do we verify that their map is correct if we don't know where our surveyed boundary line is?
We should, we should know where our.
We do, we do. I don't know how.
Define the difference for me, zero, zero, two, and I'm not putting you on the spot, so I'll read it. Our zero, zero, one says after a newly incorporated general law, qualifying for office, the governing body shall adopt an ordinance requiring a survey of the boundaries of the municipality be made. If you go on to two, section two, and I think this is where Mike's picking that up from, a survey must be based on the boundaries designated in the petition. So a petition is filed, but to me, that reads that we were supposed to hire a surveyor to give us.
We already did, we've been through this, we already do.
So we can give all these people their meet and bound numbers then?
But again, Terry, their, their, their property, they're asking for an extrication, not in the whole of their property, only the ETJ portion of the property, that's on us, it's on them. We have, we have by stovall survey, a survey of our, of our town meets and bounds. If they're wanting to do this, it's on them to figure out, to survey.
Terry, maybe, maybe, I'm not sure what the source of confusion is, but this might help. The fact that we have a meets and bounds description of the town can't be used by somebody to create their own meets and bounds description. But a meets and bounds description just sets, it draws a set of lines. And if, if they want, if they have territory within our ETJ that is outside of those lines, that's, additional territory has to be described separately by a separate meets and bounds description.
But it's going to have two, two similar coordinates on a rectangular piece of property.
It will, it will have similar, yes, it will, sure it will.
And that's what I think we have to be able to provide if they don't know what they are. We've never gone out there and done an official survey and drove a stake in the ground and referenced iron marker, whatever it, whatever.
Did we ever conduct a survey of the town?
We have a survey, right? We have a survey and with meets and bounds, but you're, you're, you're saying that we should, I don't think we can pay for an individual survey.
No, we don't, no.
We can't do that, can we?
What the petitioner's supposed to be doing is they, if their surveyor needs to access our meets and bounds description of our town limits, then he'll get that from us. And then he, he or she or they will draw their own meets and bounds.
Right, yeah, that's, that's fair, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, but we need to verify, we need to be sure that, that whatever the description they provide us is. But some of the stuff that we got from, from some of the petitioners was a legal description from the appraisal district. That's wholly inappropriate. I mean, I'm not quite sure that that's, I mean, even the values aren't correct, much less the legal descriptions, but those are by.
Until you said that tonight, I didn't, I understand better now what you, what you were trying to say is that makes a whole sense, a lot of sense, because it can't be the whole of the property.
Yeah, whether, whether they're doing it deliberately or accidentally, we may inadvertently release land from our territorial limits, not just our ETJ. That's why we need to verify the legal description. And whether we compel and insist on a meets and bounds or an accurate map or not, you know, that's up to us. You can overlook it if you want to, but I'm telling you, my recommendation is don't approve something unless you know that they're just talking about ETJ territory and not including town limits. So, because that's going to create confusion. Now, if we do release any territory from our ETJ, we will then have an obligation to redo our town map. To the extent that our town map currently delineates our existing ETJ, it'll have to be revised to carve out that.
So again, that costs us more money.
That's, yeah, sorry.
It says immediate.
Yeah, yeah. So if we don't act on it within forty-five days of the day that's filed.
So if we don't act on it, is act and vote no?
If we do not act on it within forty-five days of its filing or the first council meeting that occurs after the thirtieth day after it's been filed, it's automatically approved by operation of law. Now, it becomes really, really difficult if the petition includes land within our territorial limits because the statute, even though the petition's been approved, the statute doesn't authorize the release, the disannexation of territory. So even if their petition included land within our territorial limits, an operation by law approval would not release or disannex that territory. But it's going to be really, really complicated down the road. When they try to sell their property, when they try to subdivide their property, when anybody tries to do anything legally with that real estate, you know, it, there's going to be confusion as to whether it's in our town limits or whether it's not.
So we need to follow the letter of the law and require, require them to give us the right information, accurate information. So there's no ramifications down the line.
We just need to be sure that the property that they're describing in their petition, whether we insist on a meets and bounds or a good map or not, we need to be sure that whatever they're asking for in their petition is in fact only property within our ETJ.
How do we do that?
Well, this is dated 2015, I don't think that that.
Send it to an engineer, send it to a surveyor.
The ordinance requires it, though.
The statute requires it.
Yeah, I don't, I think this is.
I don't think it's a choice. Is it? That we can accept it the way it is?
No, I mean, you, you can exercise some discretion and overlook technical requirements.
But it's, it's us that have to back that up down the hood.
That's right.
I, I want it right if I'm going to have my name on it.
You betcha, you need to send the legal descriptions to a surveyor or an engineer and have them verify that the land you're talking about is exclusively within our ETJ and not including territory within our city limits.
So we should deny the petition because it's not accurate and they can refile it?
Well, but wait, we're on voters, so.
Yeah, so I, in point of order, I, it's been very informative and we've kind of rolled two, three and four, five altogether. But we do have some citizens that would like to speak on the definition of voter. So Dale Bryant?
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Dale Bryant, eleven, one thirty-nine, Cannon Road, twenty-four, sixty-four. I believe, I agree with most of what you said. All of you have the act in front of you?
And this is on, you're going to talk about too, right?
And we're talking about SB twenty thirty-eight.
We're talking about definition of voter.
Definition of voter, I understand, but we first have to figure out what this means and y'all are misinterpreting, in my opinion, the act. If you, do you have it in front of you?
No.
I do.
You do? I've got two other copies if somebody wants it. If you look real quickly, I'm there for a minute. The act, if you look at subsection D, subchapter D, it says, release of area by petition of landowner or resident from the ETJ. Okay, now, drop over to page, the third page, subchapter E, release of area by election, and I think we kind of agree here, from the ETJ. So there's two ways that you can lead the ETJ. One, by petition, which we're doing. The other one is by an election. And so when you start getting, and I, you don't have to agree, but when you start getting into the voters, registration and all of that, for an election, of course, they've got to be registered voters, of course, they're going to vote. But when you're doing it just by petition, you have that option because just by petition is really designed for individual property owners that want to remove their, the property out of the ETJ. I agree a hundred percent, we're in the city, you can't touch it. So, but we're just talking about the ETJ. So when you start looking, and if you look at page two, the second page, real quick, a person filing a petition under the subchapter must satisfy the signature requirement described by subsection A, subsection A right up here, it says, you just got to sign it. It's just like y'all were talking earlier, you can't deal with a electronic signature. You have to have a real signature, that's what it means. And then, part B of forty-two point one oh four, a person filing a petition under this subchapter must first, you later then, you must submit the signature to the city and the city has to verify it. Right here, forty-two point one oh five. Verified by the municipal secretary or person responsible for verifying signatures. It's not, the petition says, I, what I'm telling you is true. I live in the land, I vote, I have the majority of the property and here's my description. So you need to release it. And that is, and that's all it. And when you want to get into the city survey, give me a call, I can fill you in.
Thank you, Dale.
Blake, you're, you're spot on on that survey.
Okay, Tracy Hibbs? Chad West? Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, one eight seven, three zero, one five, six, five. When Mr. Berman, two minutes into his speech, said, Senate Bill 2038 will have no effect, no change on who gets to vote. If that had been the end of the conversation, I would have said pass. If that had been the end of the conversation, I would've said pass. But we just covered four different agenda items in like a running gun battle that covered a hundred issues, that there's no way I can respond to those in three minutes. But I'll try to cover a couple of the highlights. Under twenty thirty-eight, for a petition to be valid for an election, it's clear the person must submit their voter ID number or their date of birth. I believe there's a drafting error, which I've seen many, many drafting errors come out of Austin, Texas, over the past three and a half decades, where they contain that same voter ID requirement for a petition. And just so the record is clear, my petition, we submitted our complete voter registration information, which contains the voter ID for my wife and I. So we meet that requirement, even if it's in error, okay? The tap dance that we're tap dancing around that everybody keeps getting interested when they get too close to the fire. And, and for clarification, Madam Mayor, I wrote down that you said the town has a meets and bounds survey of the city limits. Did I, did I hear you correctly or am I mistaken?
We have a, we have an official, uh, survey of the town.
Ma'am, you said we have.
It has meets and bounds on it.
We have a meets and bounds survey of the town of Poetry, Texas.
We have, okay, I'm not gonna be grilled by you, but I, what, what I'm saying is, we have a survey. It does have some meets and bounds on it.
Some, okay. It doesn't have all the meets and bounds that a typical survey would have. True?
It was approved by the judges.
Ma- ma'am, it does.
You know what? I'm gonna make you sit down if you don't straighten up. Yep.
Okay, so hopefully nothing will happen to the video or the camera. And we'll see where you say the town does have a meets and survey of the town and we'll.
Okay, you need to keep your, your discussion, please, to the task at hand. The voter, you, you're here to talk about definition of voter.
Ma'am, all these other people got to talk about four different agenda items. I get to respond to that? The town, because the town failed to comply with chapter forty-one of the local government code.
That is not correct. You can sit down now.
Can I make my statement? You can judge me later.
No, you, you keep saying that and that's an error, so I'm not, your time's up.
Okay, you wasted my time. You succeeded.
You're up for every other issue, so. Yeah, yes.
Sorry. I, I just wanna clarify something that was said earlier, n- not by the last speaker, but by the one before. Uh, uh, he's talking, he, he's confusing the petition requirements for a, a release to be compelled by an election versus a petition for, uh, a release by the landowners. Reading from the statute, and I, section forty-two point one zero three, it, it says, and I quote, "Chapter two seventy-seven election code applies to a petition requesting removal under this subchapter." The one, the one dealing with petitions. The other thing I wanted to say is, is, I gotta tell you guys, no other city that I've ever been in has there been people that have spoken during citizens input, asking questions of the council. When people do ask questions, the council doesn't answer the questions. They usually say, wait until the end of the meeting. I don't have a staff member address. So the problem that you guys have here is that, and this is pretty consistent, people that are getting up here that are accusing you guys and asking you guys rude questions, they're being accusatory, this is not productive. This is not, uh, this is not, I don't wanna say it's not free speech because it really is. This is not a free people disagreeing. This is just argumentative and non-productive and none of you have any obligation as a public servant to submit yourself to abuse. My strong recommendation is going forward, because I've said this to you before, Mayor, you should not allow people to ask questions, and if they do, you should not be answering questions. My recommendation as your town attorney is, don't encourage people and don't, don't let them ask questions and don't answer questions. Give them their three minutes and then let them sit down.
So for, for, uh, those, thank you. Noted. So I think for the ones who want to be accusatory, I think that, um, I, I agree with you. We, um, I've been too soft on that. So, no, you can sit down or you can leave.
So I cannot respond?
No, sir.
Okay, great.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and I think we have the definition of voter. So Glenn Strauss, would you like to speak? You're up next. Okay, Haley Dennis?
Okay, so is there any other discussion? I think we've clarified that it doesn't change their voter, um, the definition of voter. Okay, number three, discuss and take action on definition of candidates for office in town, in the town in light of SB twenty thirty-eight. So the candidates for office, um, that was a little more tricky. Counsel, did you want to address that?
It's not any more tricky. It's pretty much the same deal. In order to be candidate, you must be a registered voter. To be a registered voter, you gotta live on a piece of property that you've chosen to vote in the town, so.
For how long? Like six months or?
That's a good question. You know, that I don't know.
I think it's a year. You have to live in the town for a year, is last I read.
Maybe it's a year, yeah. There's six months for a year period where you have to be resident of the town in order to be able to vote. In order, I'm sorry, in order to be able to run as a coun- you know, that's a good question. That, that question has not been, I've not addressed that question. I, and I haven't looked it up, so I don't know the answer tonight.
I think it's six months for the council. It may be a year for the mayor. I think there's two different numbers.
I'll see if I can't look it up while I'm sitting here on my cell phone.
Thank you. All right, um, and Dale Bryant, Tracy Hibbs, Chad West, uh, Mrs. Smith, Patrick Smith, Glenn Strauss, Haley Dennis. Okay, all right, so I, I think that's important distinction if we're gonna, you know, potentially go through these petitions, that we need to be clear on those things. So, um, okay, moving on. Number four, discuss and take action on the Smith petition. So as he, um, our attorney has clarified, it looks like we don't, and it is Jonathan has said, we don't actually have, um, a meets and bounds that's just for the ETJ area. But they have done a good job at getting everything else, I believe, but they do not have, um, at least for the Smiths petition, they do not have an accurate, I mean, this is dated twenty fifteen. I don't think that's a new recent survey or meets and bounds, so I don't think that that would qualify. Is there any other thought on that?
My only other thought, uh, I, I think Kaufman County might, might have been hand- handed the golden egg, uh, as we thought it was a problem before, but Mr. Berman, all their properties were separated by ID numbers according to our town limits. So could they not address or describe their property as a property ID? Because it, the county went in and drew a ID number, our line, on the town limits and gave those new property IDs. Would that not be a legal description of that property at that point?
No, those property ID numbers are relevant only for appraisal purposes. Those property ID numbers are only good for the appraisal district in determining what your rental taxes.
Wouldn't they have to be accurate? Cause if we enforced a levied, a tax.
Well, yo, they're supposed to be accurate. That doesn't mean that they are. It's also the appraised value of your property, but it doesn't mean that it is. That, the stat- and, and besides, the statute specifically says meets and bounds. To be honest with you, the first time I read the statute, it didn't say legal description, which is what I'm used to seeing. It specifically says meets and bounds or lot, block, and addition. A- and because the legislature is being that specific and meets and bounds is a meets and bounds, not by reference to.
And I'm sure this is, you know, something that, um, the people that are positioning, petitioning didn't know because we didn't know. So I'm sure this is just all of us kinda getting our feel for how this is gonna go in the future. I don't feel that the Smiths, you know, didn't include something on purpose or anything. We're just all learning, trying to figure out how to take this.
So David, it says, and I've got a copy if you'd rather read it from paper here, it says, uh, must provide meets and bounds or lot and block number if there is a recorded map or plat.
Yeah, the recorded map or plat means that there's a subdivision. The property's been subdivided. And it will be described by lot, block, and addition versus meets and bounds. Oh, and by the way, for, you must be a registered voter and reside within the city for at least twelve months before election day to be a candidate for the office of mayor.
Anything for counsel?
You must be a registered voter and you must reside in the ward from which you may be elected.
So back to lot, block bill, that's subdivision plat, I get that. But because of our hybrid city that you so accurately described, those lots and blocks have been divided.
No, 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 no. I, I, I'm gonna guess that there is not a single subdivision within the, within anywhere close to our town limits. Is there one? Okay, so the people that live within that subdivision, they can describe their property by lot, block, and addition. Right? In the absence of a plat, there, there's, if there is nothing, if there's nothing out there at all, in most rural areas, real estate is described, um, by survey and, uh, not a lot, block, and addition, but by survey and abstract, tract, survey and abstract. Um, once a developer or once a property owner wants to subdivide their land, they will then file a plat with the city or the county depending, and that plat will subdivide that land up and designate each tract of property as a lot, block, in a, in an, in an addition or a subdivision. That's what that's referring to there. In the absence of there actually formally being a plat application that's been, uh, filed and approved, meets and bounds is what the law says.
But for instance, Grandy Verde is, is an addition that was planted.
Okay.
But with this hybrid town, we have their line, the town limit is cutting that. It has to.
That's great. How does it get any more difficult than that?
So that doesn't apply either then?
Well, no, no, i- i- if, if someone owns a, a, a subdivided land, if your property, um, if ETJ territory that you owned was part of a subdivision, you would have a lot, block, and addition then. And you, rather than doing a meets and bounds description, would include in your petition the description by lot, block, and addition. Does that make sense?
Still need the meets and bounds because it's not.
It's either, it's either or. It's either or.
How do you know where the ETJ line is then if you don't have meets and bounds?
Okay, so this is all interesting, but the, the Smith, the Smith petition that we're supposed to be discussing is not within Grandy Verde. So it does, it's irrelevant at this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, these petitions, yeah, these petitions are not within any plotted subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um, did you have something?
The only thing I'd like to see is, are clearer maps. Just actually showing the piece that's going away highlighted, so that it's clear to somebody that's not familiar with meets and bounds and likes pictures.
Okay.
That, that's all, only thing I'd like to see.
Well, I think, yeah, to David's point, we, we don't wanna accidentally release part of the town. We wanna release the ETJ. That's, that's what's up for.
Well, and I, I think the technical, the meets and bounds would, would do that, but I would still like to see it visually.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Okay, any other comments by counsel before we ask, um, citizens? Dale Bryant?
Your phone light is on, by the way.
It's very, it's very bright.
Your wife's calling. Droshy. Okay, um, just real quick, Dale Bryant, eleven, one thirty-nine, County Road, twenty-four, sixty-four. First, one thing you, you really, really need to get a handle on, and, and I think you agree, and he even said the same thing. Don't call these legal descriptions. They're not. The only person who can come up with a legal description is a licensed surveyor. That's why it says meets and bounds. It helps individual property owners. I can come up with a meets and bounds. Now, you may not be, but I've been doing this for forty-five years and you're fixing to look at some other petitions, uh, next week and everything, and you're gonna see that. And because the mayor's just said arguably that they have a survey of the city, okay? If that's true, and I use that survey to describe that part of the property, less than except it's in the town, then the balance is ETJ. It's that simple, okay? But what ha- what has happened is, we've called it, uh, a survey. It's not a survey. If you look at the Texas, uh, Society of Professional Surveyors, it gives a description of survey. What your legal description is a class, is category, category ten GIS product. This is a GPS product, and that's what you have. You have a begin, you have the coordinates for beginning point, and then at the end of the road, you have a coordinates for the end of the road, right? So that's GPS. All right. Under the State Society of Professional Licensed Engineers Surveyors, okay? Representation of the parcel lines improvement features shown on the data set are approximate and do not represent a professional land surveying product. If you do a, a GPS surveying product, then you have to meet the survey tolerance. And it tells you to go to F. Under the survey tol- under, if you wanna do a survey-grade GPS description, you have to meet a tolerance of point two feet, two point four inches. That's your tolerance, people. You gotta be that close. I guarantee ya, and I'm, I'm about to have somebody bring their GPS out and check your points, and they're not gonna be right because they were done from my laptop. And there's no certification, there's no licensed person doing that work. It doesn't count. Now, if you're using it for mapping purposes, okay, you can be three foot off. Just like a ta- a, uh, a, 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 a parental district, and they do these GPS-type maps, and you've all seen our property on their websites. They're, they're just kinda showing us kinda where it's at. They're not meant to be legal. They're not meant to be able to put and be able to take any action based on those descriptions.
Thank you, Dale.
It's just an approximate. So get your head around what these definitions are. There's a difference between a plat, a survey, and a map, and it's all been legally defined by the courts.
Tracy Hibbs, Chad West, Mrs. Smith, Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, one eight seven, three zero, fifteen, sixty-five. When Mr. Berman was talking earlier, he said that, yes, in his opinion, the meet, uh, the homeowner shouldn't just rely on the meets and bounds that's, uh, the exhibit A on their deeds. He should, they should have a surveyor also get the meets and bounds from the town survey so that there can be no mistake that these people are not trying to remove themselves from the city limits as opposed to the ETJ. Is that a fair statement?
I'm not gonna answer your question.
Okay, so you're afraid to. I understand. I'm.
I'm gonna give you an answer. I'm just gonna say you got two minutes, two minutes and thirty seconds left.
Yes, sir. Okay, and that'll be on the videotape. I'm just trying to do a context. Here's the problem, Mr. Berman. The property owners can't get the meets and bounds from the town survey because it doesn't have them for everybody's property. Do you understand the quagmire we're in? The town, under chapter forty-one of the le- local government code, was required to prepare a map that shows the boundaries of the municipality and its extraterritorial jurisdiction. Immediately after the members of the governing body of a newly incorporated general law municipality qualify for office May of twenty twenty-one, immediately, the governing body shall adopt an ordinance requiring a survey of the boundaries of the municipality to be made. Our town failed to do that, and now they're using that as a cudgel to slam down any property owner who would dare say, I would like to exercise my express rights under state law to be removed from the ETJ.
You, you are welcome.
Pardon me, I'm, my time's running. I submitted my petition. It meets every requirement of the Senate Bill twenty thirty-eight and chapter forty-two of the local government code. After reviewing that document, the exhibits, I got a letter back from the secretary identifying two things that were deficient. It doesn't have the petitioner's voter ID number. We sent those to the secretary. And number two, it doesn't have a map of the land to be released containing meets and bounds. It does have a map of the land, and it identifies by tract number exactly what is being requested to be removed. And it does contain meets and bounds description of the property, less the meets and bounds that the town violated state law by not having a proper survey done. It is wi- is within the town's discretion to not harp on this technicality actually caused by the town's failure to follow the state law. The town can release in the. The town can release, and the petition only asks for release of the ETJ, not the city limits. Thank you.
Your time is up. Okay, Glenn Strauss? Okay, that's all of our citizen comments on this topic, number four. So since this, the exhibits are dated twenty fifteen, I doubt that they're new. Is any council have any other?
Well, it doesn't have the meets and bounds that we were looking for, to make sure that we don't grab a part of the town proper. So, I'm not gonna be able to approve this with a good conscience, not when it's so specific in law.
Okay, so to that point though, Sammy, and not debating you, but just sort of following up on some of the conversation that occurred in the last little bit is, how do we eliminate the challenges that we've sort of inadvertently posed in this scenario? I mean, we, if, 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 and I'm not picking on this either way, but, I mean, if we, if a surveyor, if Patrick, for example, because that's the one we're on, has a surveyor that's willing to just modify his survey, and he should be able to do it without driving a stick in the ground by getting data from the town, drawing a new line and saying, "Okay, these are the points that define the ETJ." I mean, we, I don't, I don't think we can provide that, because I think our town is like long stretches, long lines between points and not little details. So I feel like we have an obligation to correct this, not just for the purpose of these petitions, but just in general. I mean, if somebody has a reason to need to know exactly where the town starts or ends, somebody comes to build a building or something, and they want it to be in the ETJ part, not the town. Today, I don't feel like we're equipped to provide them with accurate information about their specific property and where the corners are.
Yeah, I've had, I have the same concern, that I'd sure love to be able to help them out with it, because we don't want them to have to pay for any costly surveys anyways. The more we can give them, the better. I haven't come up with anything while sitting here to alleviate that situation, but, you know, I can only know what I'm gonna do today, and I hope we look at that, you know, as the next meeting's approach. Hopefully, we'll bring up this topic again as soon as possible. We'll spend some time, look at it. I know the Smiths have gotten some extra information that they probably didn't know from this, I certainly have. So, I hope we can look at it then, look at how many meets and bounds we actually have on file, and, you know, if we decide at the end of it that we need a new survey, then we can make that decision then. But I wouldn't leap into any decision when we know we don't have all the information tonight.
So, David, can I make a motion that we take action towards this survey dilemma thing based on this item?
So, can I clarify something, please? So you assumed that they couldn't reach out to Stovall Survey. That's an assumption that I don't think can be made.
Let me, let me clarify something else, too. They do not need a survey of the town limits to hire a surveyor and have their own meets and bounds description done of that ETJ property. They don't need to have a, a town meets and bounds description, or town survey.
But how, how do they know where to put the, the stike that equals the town's boundary?
A surveyor knows how to do that. They will begin with a tract in an abstract in a survey. That's how property, rural property, non-subdivided property in Texas is described. A surveyor will begin with a tract in an abstract in a survey, a, and they'll go from there. It does not need to reference our meets and bounds description, whether we have one or not.
And, and that, what you're saying considers that, again, we had like whole pieces of property, and then the town incorporated, and this imaginary line traversed a lot of our properties, so.
If we did have a meets and bounds description of every single city limit line, gosh, that would be helpful. We got a map.
But it's three, okay, so it's three hundred and eleven feet from the center line, cannot a surveyor?
Yeah, they can figure it out.
They can figure that out.
Surveys can figure it out.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
A question, if they, if they had a surveyor do it, we would at least have the town limit at their property, wouldn't we? Because we would have a, a survey done now.
Well, we would know where their property limits are, and where our limits are in reference to their property, yeah.
If they had that done, we would know where the town limits are.
I think so.
Okay.
One other thing I'm gonna tell you guys, because this is kind of like, like a plat. If it's not denied within a specific timeframe, it's automatically deemed to be approved. So if you table it, like, for example, we're gonna be meeting again next week, you could, in theory, table it for next week and give them an opportunity to try to get a survey, but, but I, I don't know if that, if the deadline will expire. Did we charge an application fee for submitting this permit application, or this, this petition?
We, we have not, no.
Okay, so, if you deny the petition, there's nothing in the statute that says that they are prevented or prohibited from filing another petition tomorrow. If you were to deny the petition, you are not, they're not losing anything, except that they're gonna have to go through the process over again, but at least they'll know the reason why it's being denied, and they'll know where to go next. They can get a survey done, they can get a meets and bounds description, they can provide a date of birth or voter ID number if they want to. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
I'm not saying what you guys gotta do, I'm just saying that if you did, that's the consequence.
Well, that seems reasonable. I mean, especially if we, and I would say, if we're gonna go that course, we definitely don't wanna charge them any fee.
No.
Because they sure haven't been deficient in anything, and I think they put together something that's real nice. We're just learning what needs to fully be in here.
Okay, do we have any kind of motion?
I make a motion, we deny the petition, the Smiths' petition.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by White, to deny the current, the Smith's petition. All those in favor? And that passes three to, okay, so there's one opposed and one abstaining. Okay, so that passes three votes in favor of. Okay, so we have three in favor and two opposed. I believe you are correct on that. So three, we are denying that, and two oppose that. Okay. Thank you. All right, so number five, discuss and take action on the Hibbs petition. On this petition, it looks like we have the same problem. I did not see the voter ID card, though, as well, so I think that also has to be provided, or the, as he stated, the date of birth. So, it's the same kind of issue. We do not have a, a current survey.
For clarity, this is all I got for the petition, one page.
So in your packet that Teresa provided, I believe that, yeah. We did have issue when we were trying to download some of that, it kept spinning like I had a virus, and so, anyway. Yeah, she did provide that. Any comments? Okay, we can go ahead. We have some citizens who want to speak. Del Bryant? Okay, Tracy Hibbs?
Tracy Hibbs, County Road twenty-four thirty-two. Since you don't have my complete petition in front of you, I would implore you to vote for my petition.
I haven't, no.
The entirety thing, and it's not in the packet.
I think I also received an email.
Okay. The other thing that I wanna know is, how does the town know if I have a survey that it's correct and in line with the town and city limits? The other thing is, we have spent the last thirty or forty minutes talking about these petitions, and there's nowhere in the statute that says this is a votable thing by the city council. Look at the law. I also wanna mention that our previous town attorney said that our map of the town was gerrymandered. I also want the council to note that property directly across from my property, the town only took in twenty-six feet.
Okay, Chad West? Okay, Mrs. Smith? Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, one eight seven three zero one five six five. I believe the Hibbs petition for release meets the required elements of the state law and should be granted. And I appreciate particularly Councilman White trying to give us an additional opportunity to take some more action. But here's what the problem is. If the town had done a survey by a real surveyor in compliance with Texas state law, we could have filed the meets and bounds from that survey and not have to have our property surveyed. This remedy of, hey, we'll just, the town didn't do the meets and bounds survey that was required. We'll just let all the individual citizens pay for that for the town. That is not appropriate, it is not correct. And Tracy says it's not legal, I agree with her. The way the town has been run is an embarrassment. Every, the town continually fails to follow state law, and they either ignore it, or they say, "Well, citizens, it's up to you to figure it out. It's up for, up to you to figure out how to take care of our mess." That is not the way a town should be run. It is not correct. Thank you.
Glenn Strauss? Okay, so any discussion from council?
Have we received the voter ID and/or birth dates for both of these petitioners?
Well, we've, we're on number five, the Hibbs petition, we have not.
There's two petitioners on it, that's why I said both.
Uh, no, we have not received, I, I did ask Secretary Teresa today if she received the, the voter ID number for the Hibbs.
And your, and your interpretation is we have to have one or the other?
One or the other.
Okay.
But. Okay, so. But we, it's the same thing with the, with the Smiths' petition. I don't believe we have that, we, I think we have the whole property, not just the ETJ, so it would be faulty. Do we have them?
I make a motion to disapprove.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to disapprove by Councilmember White, seconded by Blake. All those in favor of disapproving this, and that, and then the other two, it's no, okay? So it, we have disapproved the Hibbs petition in a vote of three to two.
Well, and just for the record, my, my no on both of them is not because I am in favor of them doing this. It's just that I feel like we put them in a dilemma, and I don't know how else to respond. So it's not a, it's not a for or against vote. I just don't feel like we answered the question, but that's okay.
Don't answer it.
You're out of.
Don't answer it.
You're out of order. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on. All right, item number six, discuss and take action to approve items at Town Hall. We've got a dead tree removal, five hundred and fifty dollars, dirt and spreading, eight hundred dollars, a roofing quote of forty-seven thirty-six, forty-five, ADA railing of a thousand, foam spray, it was originally thirty-five hundred, he came down on that actually, and a skirting of thirty-seven ninety-seven. So, since he came down on that, we actually have a six hundred and fifty dollar savings. But I think the, the quote for the skirting went up like a hundred and twenty-six dollars because it's been since February and prices have gone up some.
I don't have the quote for skirting. I couldn't, I could not find it in either packet anywhere.
Yeah, we don't have it for that, and we don't have it for.
ADA railing.
You've had it in the, well, Jonathan, you probably don't have it, it's probably is in the previous council member, in the, because we've dealt with it in, I think, way back in February, but let me see if I can. Okay, so, here, I'll let you look at this. So the quote on, this is the materials for the skirting, and I did get an updated one just this week. It's a hundred, it is a hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the materials. He didn't go up on his labor, and I did.
I just wanted to know what the material was.
So, the quote was on Galvalume, similar to what the historic church had, so I think.
Can we discuss the, the spray foam, and I'm, I'm not relying on my expertise on this deal. So I did call the, the contractor that, that you provided the quote for, left him a message, he didn't return my call. My question to council, and I can, I can fill you in on my thoughts, this is an open cell spray foam, so this is similar to the spray foam that you get out of a can that you can poke your finger into. So the underside of that bu, building could become a, a rat's nest that you'll never, never, ever get rid of. I called the, I called a contractor that I frequently use, he said typically you use closed cell, it's as hard as concrete. This is not about a R value, yeah, yeah, you're gonna gain R value from it, but it's, it's retaining the heat because of the vapor loss. So, I called your guy just asking that question, but I really don't wanna see six inches of soft foam down there that's gonna breed a colony of rats.
I was curious why it was five and a half to six inches, too.
So I, I'm glad, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm interested in exactly what type of open cell spray foam he's using, because some of them are treated for pests, including bugs and rats, but we do have to make sure, that's a great point, that it is that one if we're gonna go this.
So Terry, I did, I did talk to him about this very thing. I had the same concern, well, not the same concern. My concern was, I was trying to educate myself on open cell versus closed cell. Closed cell, of course, has a higher R value, but it's also waterproof. So he said the concern with putting waterproof under a wood floor is that it could retain moisture and thus cause rot on your floor.
Well, it's a, it's a two-part, he's right, water from the top.
Yeah.
But you gotta think about the protection it brings from underneath. We don't have a poly barrier underneath that thing, so any moisture that builds underneath that building in our humid climate is, is saturating now into what would be considered a sponge, and holding that against your, your structure. Where, where closed cell's gonna wrap that, form that vapor and water barrier on the bottom, you still have the concern from the top, but typically, we can see water leaks from the top. So that wouldn't bother me as much. Your, your closed cell, and you can ask him, we don't have to take action on this right now, but if there's any moisture in the bottom, you have a pin leak, you have anything, it's gonna suck it, that, that stuff will hold water as, as, as good as a sponge.
Well, he said just the opposite. He said the open cell will actually evaporate more quickly. The closed cell will actually hold the water in.
Closed cell will not absorb water, period.
So if you had a leak on top of the wood, it actually would hold that moisture in next to the wood. No, well, if it's under the floor, I, I mean, I know that from the, from the gas hose lines that were taken out, there was actually holes in the wood floor that I could see the ground, and we filled them with dowel rods. And we also had, we also had a few of the holes covered with wood, but if you, if there was a spill, for instance, in, inside the building, and you had the closed cell, my understanding is that it would hold that water in, and there'd be no way, no way for it to escape.
And that is notable, because I happen to know that wood flooring will deteriorate after twenty-four hours with water, so it has to be able to evaporate really quick. Anytime there's a wood flooring, whether it's laminate or reel, you have to get water out quick. That depends on what kind of sealant we have on top of our wood. From any spills that we have with somebody's water bottle or something like that, I would say, you know, if we have a good seal.
Yeah, going, going back to the skirting, are we, are we venting anything in the skirting?
He did have, he did talk about venting quite a bit.
Okay.
He did. Well, I combined them, but, but, I mean, you can approve singly if you'd like. But as far as the foam, did any of you do any research on that, that you have an, an opinion? Okay, so in, he believes that under a wood floor, you should do closed cell?
Mine did as well, but he was saying just two inches.
Two inches, two inches.
Yeah, and, and, but he was a thousand dollars higher to do it.
Eight hundred dollars cheaper than this, twenty-eight hundred and fifty? I wanna talk to, I wanna talk to your guy, because closed cell is actually more expensive normally. Yeah, open cell is usually cheaper. Well, I mean, I think we wanna do our homework and, I mean.
That's really interesting. I mean, we, we might wanna use them for open cell, even if we go with that. I mean, if he's doing it cheaper. Really? I mean, why wouldn't we? Especially if you know the guy.
And who is your guy? All right, well, okay, any other comment on any of these items? Uh, the dead tree removal, um, that was the best price I could get. There were no volunteers. The tree is rapidly falling over into the road. I think if we're gonna, we get a lead by example, we should probably take care of our own trees. And the, the dirt and spreading, that was from Mr. Potts. He did, since he's close by, he volunteered to spread it and that's so that we can have erosion control and actually have something besides sand in our front yard to grow something besides weeds. So, um, the hundred dollars, I think, was very reasonable. The roofing quote, um, before that we get the heavy rains, um, I did talk, I did, uh, talk, well, I texted Mr., um, Simmons on that just this week, hey, is that quote still good? He said, yes, I could get to it in a couple of weeks. And so I think that sounds great because the rainy season will be coming and we've been lucky so far, but that's not to say that we will be, continue to be.
I will say, the only weird thing is that he's installing starter strips on the eaves and the rakes. Not sure why you would do that. Normally it's just one or the other, depending on how you're laying the roof, whether it be zigzag or just standard pyramid. That's a little odd.
I know, he's a pro roofing specialist.
Maybe that's just what he has written in by default.
And it might just be a certain section of the roof because there was a section that needed a little more attention.
Okay, well, maybe he's doing it both ways.
Okay, and the ADA railing, um, that was from the fellow who, that was Ross Construction, who did the, the ADA ramp. Um, and the, the current railing, we're talking about the, the new rule where you have to have the little hoop down at each end and then also the metal on the inside. So he said he could do that for a thousand. And that is with stainless steel or aluminum. Okay, Tracy Hibs?
Tracy Hibs, County Road twenty-four thirty-two. Can anybody tell me how much we've spent on the Town Hall since June?
You can email me and I'll be happy to get that to you.
Okay, perfect. And the value of the Town Hall?
Again, you can email me and I'll be happy to get that to you.
Okay. Um, can somebody tell me when the last time the secretary was here at a meeting? City Secretary? Okay, just wanna make sure because there's an ordinance stating that she's supposed to be here.
Do we have a city secretary?
Oh, you don't even know that we have a city secretary?
We have a.
I don't believe we do.
We, we have a deputy city secretary. We do not have a main city secretary, so. She's a deputy city secretary as we labored her such. And she, because of her health reasons, can't be here, so. Dale Bryant?
Dale Bryant, eleven one thirty-nine County Road twenty-four sixty-four. Okay, real quick, first of all, on your fire marshal, and Doug, you could probably verify this. Make sure you have your fire marshal, the twenty-eight seats. Now you have to overlay the ADA requirements for that seat.
Are you gonna be talking about?
And that's gonna take four. I'm talking about item numbers, number six.
Okay, all right.
Let me make my point.
Okay.
My time. All right, so your ADA. Most of y'all don't know this, but every member of city council and the mayor got an email from the architectural barriers.
Excuse me, you're supposed to address the mayor and the council, not the audience.
Architectural barriers and said that you did have to meet ADA and they were willing, willing to come down and train you. A, uh, a, uh, violation has been recorded and a second, understand, because ADA is a civil rights issue. A second complaint is going to be filed with the Department of Justice. We, we've got some problems. Thirdly, building inspection. Last month, Mr. Tom Anderson and the mayor said that they passed the inspection, building inspection. And they, and Mr. Tom quoted from that building inspection. Well, I went and looked for the building inspection. Scott Kelly, if anybody wants his phone number to verify what I'm seeing, please do. I've talked to him and his boss. Scott Kelly did a home inspection for the town. Y'all knew what you were doing when you did. He said it was not a building inspection, it was a home inspection. Mr. Kelly, he is licensed under track as a home inspector. He also has a second certification, which is a Texas Department of Agriculture tech. Means he can spray for bugs. And then he has a, an NAWT certification, which means he can inspect septic system. Does not say he can, he doesn't claim that he is. And you should have be, should have gotten a call from him or his attorney by now. So the question we have to ask is, why? Why didn't you just buy a building permit? I mean, a building inspection, right? You bought a home inspection. Go buy a building inspection. The reason why they didn't do that is they couldn't pass a building inspection. In order to get a final building inspection, wait a minute, you have to go through all the periodic inspections leading up to the final building inspection. You know that and anybody else that's been in construction knows that. And that's why they knowingly went with a home inspection instead of a building inspection, because they knew they couldn't pass it. People, you boys, better put your big pants on. We're gonna hang this albatross we call Town Center around your neck.
Your, your time is up. So, the town has no, um, has no building codes. Therefore, we aren't subject to, um, that as my understanding. All right, Chad West. Okay. Mrs. Smith? Okay, Glenn Strauss? All right, so that's all of our citizens' comments. No, he did not.
Wait and switch.
Okay, so any other comments on these items?
I, I'm read the motion. If every, if everybody's okay, I, I just wanna take them one at a time instead of grouping them together, because I don't, I don't feel comfortable with, uh, passing the spray foam or the ADA railing, even though I'm ready for it. I haven't seen that one, unfortunately. The skirting, I'm okay with going back to our old numbers, but, uh, so I'll make a motion to, to pay to remove the dead tree.
Second.
I'm sorry to pay what?
The dead tree.
Dead tree removal.
For five fifty. Okay, all those in favor? And that passes five to oh. We agree. All right.
I did.
Jonathan.
Sorry, I didn't say that. Jonathan Blake.
I'll move to approve the dirt and spreading for eight hundred dollars.
Who seconds that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the dirt and spreading, eight hundred dollars, seconded by Blake. All those in favor? And that passes. Jaffe, did you?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't see that. Okay, five and oh on that. All right.
I'll move to approve the roofing quote, forty-seven thirty-six forty-five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the roofing quote by, um, Councilmember Fowler, seconded by Blake. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously?
And finally, I'll move to approve the skirting for thirty-seven ninety-seven.
Terry, I can't hear you, sorry. My hearing, uh, these things went out, so I can't hear you unless you speak loud.
I'll move to approve the skirting for thirty-seven ninety-seven.
Second.
Now, may I clarify? Remember that went up to a hundred and twenty-seven dollars, so we're gonna have to modify. Uh, yes, the cost, the, I just had it up, a hundred and twenty-seven forty-eight dollars more.
Thirty-eight twenty-four.
So if we just round it up, guys, then we can approve it.
So what's the number?
Is it? Hundred and twenty-seven dollars exactly, thirty-eight twenty-four?
Well, unless there's incidentals.
Okay. I'll move to approve the skirting up to four thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the skirting on the Town Hall at four thousand dollars, seconded by Blake. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Yeah, it was thirty-nine twenty-four, so that's good. Okay, moving on. Okay, uh, discuss and take action on the committee fall cleanup day for November eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, we've, um, had one in the spring. Last year, we had it in December. I'm hoping to get ahead of it this year, November eleventh, Saturday. And, um, I think on there, uh, we have, for now, we have Cards and Titan. They have, they have participated in that willingly, um, and have done a good job on that, so.
Unless we go exclusive.
Well, we might not be making that decision before then, but I don't know.
I can be there at seven.
You can be there at seven. We, we could use a little more council participation. We've had some citizens, but. Okay, that'd be great. Okay, do we have a motion? It is seven AM to seven PM and, um, that, we do need to kinda talk about this. Um, I did have a move it to the Town Hall parking area because I, we want people to be more familiar with the Town Hall area. And so it's on a Saturday, so it won't impede, uh, Longhorn at all and should be fine. There's plenty of room. Any thoughts on that?
So if there's no comments from the audience, I make a motion we accept.
Second.
Uh, let me look. Uh, Dale Bryant, did you have an eye? Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Anderson, seconded by Jaffe. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, all right. Number eight, and the final one, discuss and take action to update rules of procedure in a quorum as shown. So, um, we did, I did have, uh, David Berman look at this and, of course, he wasn't privy to it the first go around or the second go around. So the, um, highlighted areas, um, are the modification, potential modifications. So basically, we changed our regular meeting to Thursday, so we crossed out the third Tuesday and we added in the Poetry Town Hall. Um, it already said, you know, Faith Temple or another location that's advertised, so it wasn't exactly, I mean, but we're being a little more clear. It says Poetry Town Hall located at five six seven one CR three twenty-three in Poetry, Texas, or at Faith Temple Church located at one one two one four FM fifteen sixty-five, or at any place the Town Council may direct. The date and or time of any regular scheduled meeting may be adjusted if necessary, so as long as proper notification is provided. Are, are you guys okay with that? Okay. And then under special meetings, um, it says two members instead of three. Uh, and then we crossed out, upon rec, well, it says, upon receipt of a request for special Town Council meeting by the Town Secretary, the Town Secretary shall, um, and they crossed out, shall call such a meeting at the earliest available opportunity at which participants and facilities are available. And so it just said, shall determine the availability of the Town Council chambers, yada, yada, and cross all that out, so. Um, and then notice may be given unilaterally, that's a word, in writing, in person, or by telephone, or by electronic communication. And it says special meeting, um, we need at least seventy-two hours in advance. Or one hour in advance in case of an emergency meeting, and that's by state law. We can, if there's a tragic weather event or something, we can call an emergency meeting within an hour. Okay, executive session, he just, uh, cleaned it up a little bit, just said chapter five five one, okay? And then he cleaned up, took out special meeting and, or, it says work session. Work sessions are informal meetings and cross out the word special. It is not really a special.
Tara, is it, just a point of clarification, is a work session different from a workshop? Is that a more general term or?
That's a good question for David.
Okay, I wonder if we ought to, since we call them workshops, should we maybe call that workshop?
I'm fine with that. Okay. All right, I'm fine with that addition or amendment. Then he put on, on page four, consideration of agenda items. He highlighted the recommended Town Council procedure. And of course, we belabored that for a long time on the order of that, um, so I don't think we.
Is the word recommended added? Why? Well, it doesn't say shall or shall not.
You guys have not followed subpart D. Don't handcuff yourself.
Yeah, okay. Yep. Okay, and on page five, he said.
Hey Tara, can we, sorry, can we back up to, uh, page three where it talks about agenda packet preparation?
Sure.
Can, can we put in here, I mean, we have an agreement that we're still running on, I believe, that the council should receive things five days ahead, a hundred and twenty hours ahead?
By law, it's seventy-two hours. Again, I don't think we wanna handcuff ourselves because as we know, it, we're dependent upon a lot of different entities for certain things. So by law, it's seventy-two hours and so we, we have been trying to honor that. So the Friday before the Thursday meeting, we're trying to get everything to you, but there are cases when, um, we can't, um, get an ordinance or something to you within, on a Friday.
Well, that's fine, but we, I mean, we, we voted to make it five days, so if we pass this the way it is, we're eliminating that commitment. Now, I get that sometimes things dribble in, but it is handy to have them for the council members, not the citizens.
And we are honoring that, but I don't wanna handcuff ourselves. No later than seventy-two hours. We're doing it earlier.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we started a week and then we agreed on five days and now we're going back to three days.
Well, this has always been here, seventy-two hours. That's the state law.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, but if, if we were going to make this more, more representative of what we've been practicing for the last year. Right, we would, we would also have that in writing, like we're putting other things in writing, so.
Well, I would, I.
How would you word that? Make every attempt to have it done?
Yeah, make every attempt.
The concern, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, is, is access by council members.
Only council members.
So, so what if the language said, agenda packets will be available at Town Hall for public review at least seventy-two hours prior to a regularly scheduled meeting and should be made available to council at least five days before?
Right, that's how we've been running and.
That's what we passed already. Okay. That's what I was.
But it's not written down, but in, in.
We used to term, obviously, a hundred and twenty hours.
In fairness, Tara, I think it's been at least a meeting or two since anybody's made an issue of, hey, we just got that a couple of days ago. I mean, I think we're kinda letting that go, understanding that there are complications. But I'd like the, the heart of it to be, we're gonna try to get you the bulk of the stuff five days ahead. And if it's missing a few things, I, again, nobody's complained recently that I can remember of the last minute stuff.
It is helpful to have at least a part-time deputy secretary to help with those things. That is helpful. Okay, noted. Um, so we have on there at the top of page three, under the second paragraph, agenda packets will be available at Town Hall for public review, no later than seventy-two hours prior to a regularly scheduled meeting and should be available to council, a hundred and twenty hours. Is that what you said, before?
Five days. I mean, since we're doing hours, we might as well keep it hours.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
You wanna say, if possible?
And should be. That's not shall, it should be. I mean, we're, I mean, we're trying our darndest, okay, so, I mean.
I think should be gives some flexibility.
Just, yeah, okay. All right, so then, on page five of seven, midway down the page, it says, after being recognized by the mayor slash preceding officer, the person shall approach the podium and state his or her name and should give his or her address for the record. So, um.
Do we have to have them state their address, sir?
And so, yeah, that was actually what I was gonna talk about. I would like to know, you know, whether the representative is from Poetry or not. Maybe we could change that because stating your address, that's kinda, it kinda tells too much. I don't want people to be able to drive up to people's front door, but saying whether you're in the town of Poetry or not.
I think David's gonna speak to this.
Really, really quickly, it's a good point. In, in a lot of cities, a. A, and a lot of cities, a lot of people have become, um, more and more concerned about not having to disclose their home address. Um, so what cities are doing, I mean, it, it's helpful for us to have it because in the event that we needed to contact these people after the meeting, if they had questions and we wanted to answer their questions after the meeting, that we had their address, we could send them something or send somebody by. Um, but what cities are now doing is, at least in other cities, they're just simply asking for name and city of residence.
Name and city. So you'll notice on the sheet, I put on there, you know, hey, you can do a general.
Couldn't we capture the, well, sir, I don't have a microphone. Couldn't we capture the address on the little card they fell out with Evy? I mean, just in case we need to get back to them.
So it's pri, it's more private. I mean, they're supposed to, yeah.
So then we have it.
Yeah, it's already on there.
We can refer back to the signup sheet.
And we can just cross out address and put city residence. I think that should work. Yeah, city of residence, thank you.
Okay, city of residence, or town of, town of residence?
City slash town, I mean, they might be from a city.
They might be from Alaska. Okay. All right. Okay, so, okay, that's it on page five. And then on page seven, there's some in yellow, it says the, the top of the, or the bottom of the top paragraph, it says these provisions should be followed unless state law dictates. Otherwise, I think he's, he's doing his job, he's saving us from, you know, getting in trouble. Um, and then, under, this is new, this paragraph, standards of community service. Each mayor and council member shall be an example of community service. In a town where property taxes are non-existent, volunteerism is essential. Therefore, the council should lead by example. Over each fiscal year, each member of council should accumulate a minimum of fifteen hours in service to the town outside of the duties on council, i.e. time preparing or in town council meetings, and ensure that the community service hours are written in the volunteer logbook. These hours might be helpful with cleanup days, preparing items at town hall, preparing for a town special event, or the like.
So I, I don't disagree at all, Tara, with the spirit of this, and I think we all, you know, provide support to the city and neighbors in different ways, although we may not be writing it down in the book correctly. What I would encourage us to consider is to say, you know, mayor and council members are encouraged to, you know, volunteer in this sort of thing. But to me, I don't know, just something about putting a number on it just seems a little odd. I mean, I feel like I'm back in grade school.
I don't feel like this paragraph belongs in this document. This is, this is a decorum policy of how we conduct business. If y'all want to write a mission statement or a, or a vision for the, for the city, that's different. This is, this is a decorum policy, how we're going to conduct business.
Well, right above it is conflict of interest and that, and violations of the policy. And it talks about council, um, you know, the appearance, and, I mean.
And I'm with Mike, too, this whole, uh, uh, logging it into a volunteer book. This, this town doesn't need to know what I do on a day-to-day basis to help this town. I volunteer in a lot of ways. I volunteer on the water board, you're, you're aware of that, but th, this is not, this is not the only way that we're going to serve the community. I just, I don't, I don't think this paragraph belongs in this document whatsoever.
Well, one, one reason that it's here is because when at TML conference, they, one of the takeaways that I got was that they said, you know, you need to be engaged in the community and not just be on the council and be the, the leading class. You need to be more engaged in the community and taking part in your, in your community days, your service days, be there among the community. And that was really emphasized, and so that's an opportunity for that. And so. So I know that our local school was founded on that principle as well, and it's worked very well for twenty-plus years. So.
Well, I, I think, kind of to Terry's point, though, Tara, and again, I, I don't have a problem with it being in this document, and I don't have a problem with all the wording, except the part about a number. I think, I don't know, I mean, I, maybe somebody wants to confess. I, I do lots of things around the town. I mow the sides of the road, I get trees out of the road, I help neighbors, I run errands to the courthouses. Now, again, I'm not, in fairness, I'm not writing it down in the book, so, but I just, I don't know. I, I don't have anything, again, encouraged to, or whatever is good, but the, the hard number is just a, that's a sticking point for me.
So I know that, um, our former council member and some of the other council who have put hundreds of hours into the town, you know, felt like it'd be a little more fair to have, have something like this, so.
So why don't we just take out the reference to the number? The, the spirit of it, I, I do agree that we need something, and I, I like that. But, and then way to compromise is, I'd say just take out the number, just say the, the spirit of it, which is, uh, taking that third sentence, and basically eliminating it down to, um, outside the town duties, and then, but examples are preparing, um, in the town council, outside town council preparation, and it might be helping with cleanup days, repairing stuff, that's fine, but, yeah, why don't we just take out the number?
You want to take out, okay, so over each fiscal year, each member of council should accumulate a minimum of hours in service to the town.
Yeah, I think my wife would be happy if I only spent fifty hours.
Yeah, you can get off short.
Yeah, Tom's gone above and beyond.
Read it again, I need to make sure I know the minute.
Okay, so, understandings of community service, each mayor and council member shall be an example of community service. In a town where property taxes are non-existent, volunteerism is essential. Therefore, the council should lead by example. Over each fiscal year, each member of council should accumulate a minimum of hours in service to the town outside of the duties on council, i.e. time preparing or in a town council meetings, and ensure that the community service hours are written in the volunteer logbook. These service hours might be helping with the cleanup days, repairing items at town hall, preparing for a town special event, or the like.
Okay, I, I, I still think this needs to be its own resolution, and if that, if y'all think so good. I, i, if not, I'm telling you guys, this volunteer logbook's going to be used during the next election to do tip for tat, who did what, who didn't do something.
So. So there's a difference between helping your neighbor and helping, like, at the town hall, or?
It's volunteerism.
Well. Okay, tell that to the school when, you know, they want the recess taken care of, you know, I'm talking. I'm so proud of you, that's so good.
Well, I would like to propose my version.
Just take out the words, a minimum of fifteen.
Okay.
I, I would like it to read like this. Therefore, the council should lead by example. Over each fiscal year, each member of the council should volunteer time preparing or in ca, town council meetings, et cetera. These service hours might be helpful with cleanup days, and continue, just cut out from insure, and to book, and from accumulate to i.e.
So our other volunteers are required from the auditor to write in their hours? So you're saying you're not going to write in your hours, so?
I will, but I don't think we should make people.
So you, well.
You said required, are they required or requested?
I'd be fine with requested.
They're requested, they're requested, yeah.
We said required, but.
Yeah, sure, or encouraged or requested.
They're encouraged. So we just, should we say encouraged?
That's good by me.
Encouraged, I mean, because it helps the town.
It does help, yeah.
It gives us the number, so that we can use them.
Yeah, okay.
Might as well encourage.
So I'm going to get with you on, so.
Well, that encourage is going to be, I don't know where you're going to shove that in.
Okay, let me reread this again. Hope, or do you want to, let's see. Each mayor and council member shall be an example of community service. In a town where properties that taxes are non-existent, volunteerism is essential. Therefore, the council should lead by example. Over each fiscal year, each member of council, um, should spend time preparing, uh, out.
Volunteer time.
Should volunteer time for, uh, outside of time preparing in council me, uh, council meetings. They are encouraged to have service hours written in the volunteer logbook. These service hours might be helping with cleanup days, preparing, repairing items at town hall, preparing for a special event, or the like. You guys happy with that? Okay. Okay, is there a motion to accept that amendment? And what about the other items?
I think we can just accept it as we've added.
And we took out the extra page, it's been there forever, and we just haven't addressed it.
Well, I move to, well, actually, do we have citizens? Did we already do citizen comments?
Okay, Tracy Heads?
Thank goodness I don't have the same address anymore. Um, so if the council, huh? Oh, okay.
Just say poetry.
Poetry, yay! Okay, so if you don't do these community service hours, um, are we, what are we going to, are we going to fire you? What are we going to do?
On election day.
On election day, okay. Okay. So my other question is on the seventy-two hours. So this council has committed to this community to provide adequate information seventy-two hours prior to a meeting. I've spoken with a county judge, and I've also spoken with a couple of commissioners. Their interpretation to me was, if an amendment is made to the agenda less than seventy-two hours prior to the meeting, you can meet, but you cannot vote. So that means last month's meeting, everything that you did at last month's meeting is voided.
So our previous law firm said that that was not the case. All right, Del Bryant? Okay, uh, Mrs., Mrs. Smith? Okay, Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, poetry ETJ. When we got to page four, there was a brief reference to the proposed change, and then someone said, oh, no, I want to talk about the agenda item back on page three, so we went back to that. And then somehow we just blew past page four and went on to some other changes. So is the proposed change to consideration of agenda items, the word recommended? First of all, can somebody explain to me why, why would that change need to be made? What's it going to accomplish? Mr., or Councilmember Blake says asked and answer. Who, who answered that question? Well, he made a comment, but y'all never even decided the issue.
Mr. Smith, you can email me, that question, I'll be happy to answer you.
Okay, that's a valuable citizen input. As a citizen, I would ask the council not to insert the word recommended. For the past year and a half, there has been repeated efforts to water down the decorum rules to minimize the ability of a little citizen to stand up and speak to his local government, his or her local government. The, with the word recommended in there, instead of following the agenda that we've done now for two and a half years, clear precedent, where we, mayor reads the agenda, people present information, council members ask questions, discuss and deliberate, then during deliberation, can, council members may ask anyone present a specific question for clarification. Council members may ask questions of appropriate experts. All those are valuable events to take place before the citizen, under section F, gets up and is able to make his comments. We've already seen where the mayor wants to move citizen comments to the beginning of the meeting to make them really pretty much useless. My concern is, if we take a mandatory obligation and turn it into a discretionary one, we're going to have like a, kind of a show game, where we're moving everything around and nobody knows what's going on. I, I ask the council not to go along with that proposed amendment. Finally, with regard to the virtual, virtue signaling paragraph at the end of the document on page seven, we already have newsletters that talk about what all the council members have done. We have agenda items thanking all the council members about things they volunteered to do. And first, and secondly, go look at the first page of the decorum and procedures policy. That virtue signaling has nothing to do with how the town council meetings are going to be conducted. Nothing at all. So if you're really just, really need the publicity, or whatever it is, it needs to be either a separate resolution or a separate ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Glenn Strauss? Okay, Haley Dennis?
Haley Dennis, and you already know my address, as you released it to everybody and posted it, but I live in Poetry. So on page seven, the standards of community service, there shouldn't be a volunteer book on this to record what everybody's doing. There are some council members here that have a little bit more flexibility in their schedules than others do, because y'all, all, or most of you work full-time jobs outside of being a mayor or council member. Okay, I wasn't asking a question, so you didn't have to shake your head. But you can lead this town without getting recognition. You can volunteer, you can help plenty of people in this community without getting recognition for it, putting it in a volunteer logbook. There's no reason that you, as grown men, should have to put this in a logbook. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Haley. The reason for the volunteer logbook is at the quest of our auditor and our insurance, so it is not just virtue signaling. Okay. So, um.
Question about the logbook. Do we just have to record volunteer hours, or we, do, do we have to list who did it?
We have to list, um, whether it's inside or outside.
So we don't have to put a name?
They do not have to put a name, they have to put the hours, and then if, what it was. So if, if they feel uncomfortable, put, but, I mean.
Then I say let them just log hours.
They can log hours, but then how do you verify that? You know? So. I mean, you could, okay, we need order, order. Um, so as far as council, um, yeah, I mean, I, there's, there shouldn't be, um, it does have, we have to know what it is so that we, it can be logged as inside or outside for our, our insurance.
I mean, if y'all go with the edits that I was suggesting, then I think that's taken care of anyways. You know, it's not required, but it's recommended. I'll be doing it just to help out with.
They're not going to get demerit for doing, not doing it in the logbook.
So Tara, in, in response to an, an issue that was raised, I'd like to kind of call the question to the council and just get follow-up, because I feel like that's how this is supposed to work. So we deliberate, they give us some ideas, and then we potentially reconsider. So on, uh, page four on the recommended, I'd like to hear any of the other council members that are willing to speak up, what your thoughts are on sort of softening up the, the commitment on that, uh, block of things that, as was noted, we've been doing pretty reliably for the last years. Anybody?
I believe Mr. Berman addressed that earlier. Right?
He did. There have been times, um, Mike, where we have inadvertently gone out of order, like, maybe we took the vote and, oops, we didn't get the people to do it beforehand, and then we go back, and so we're not perfect, and so I think.
Well, I mean, there's been.
We have tried really hard to adhere to this, so, and I think, I think actually, he said that over the last two and a half years, we have done the best we could to adhere to this, so I think the, just for the historic, um, we have, we have, um, the history here that we will try to go ahead and do this, it's just that we aren't perfect.
I mean, if we're going to consider making it strict, I should, sure wouldn't want it to be enforced order, because we don't do lots of this stuff in order. I hardly think there's been a, a meeting where we've done it all in order. Because, I mean, we make suggestions and discuss after a motion's been made sometimes, let it just sit there for a second. Sometimes we ask experts in a different order than is listed there, so. If it was bullet points, that'd be one thing, but the fact that we have it A through K, I mean, it looks like we have to do it in that exact order.
I don't think there's any risk of us intentionally trying to go out of this order. I think the history is clear, we've, we've tried.
I need a little grace, because tonight I get off, I got off topic in the conversation, so.
I think we all need a little grace.
One more plea for this last paragraph. Let's read the two whereas. Whereas, conduct of a meeting of the town council, and whereas, appearing before town council at a public meeting.
meeting. Why does that need to be in this resolution? Why is it not in its own resolution?
Because it saves legal money.
So you need to change the whereas. Whereas, when we're not in front of town council, and whereas, when we're not at a town council meeting. It doesn't deserve to be in here. Y'all, y'all vote what you want. You know what my heart is.
Well, it gives.
Well, do you have any edits that we can just put in there?
Remove it. Make another resolution.
So we have council member conduct stunt, standards that are also not in that top paragraph, too. So this is part of the standard. We, we are a town of volunteerism, so I think his. All right, does anyone have a motion? It's getting late.
Make a motion, we accept it with the changes that we suggested for page seven.
And, and the others.
And the others.
All of them.
All of them.
Including changing work session to workshop.
That's true. With all the changes we went over.
To a hundred and twenty hours.
Yeah.
Recommended.
Okay, is there a second?
Sorry, it's ten thirty. I agree.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have, um, a motion by Anderson, seconded by Blake, to accept this resolution of the town council of adopting a coun, council decorum and procedures policy as amended as we discussed. All those in favor? And so it's four to, and one opposed, okay? So it passes four to one. Okay, so that's the last of our agenda items, and general comments? Public general comments, it looks like we have Ms. Tracy Hibs.
First of all, I know each and every one of you put a lot of time and effort into serving this community, and I appreciate it. But as I'm looking over tonight's agenda, there's, you know, you failed to report, uh, the cost of the town hall, okay, to the citizens. Um, the Salzowaves vendors, they could have livestreamed a presentation, which wouldn't have taken up almost an hour of the time tonight. They could have just livestreamed a presentation or given you a presentation where y'all could have looked over it and then brought it to the town and said, these are what we're looking at, this is why. Uh, discuss, uh, and take action, define a candidacy to office and lie to town hall, uh, SB twenty thirty-eight. Was that necessary or not? I don't see the point in that. I don't see the point in the council discussing whether I want to petition my ETJ to be out of the ETJ. Um, because there's no relevance in it. It's a done deal. You can't, there's no vote. Mr. Berman can even tell you, there is no vote on this. Um, you know, y'all passed an ordinance last week requiring citizens of this town to tear down trees in the public right-of-way. The public right-of-way, you entitled as your right-of-way, the city's right-of-way. A lady got a letter from the town just last week. Her husband has been deceased for six weeks, and there's a tree in the middle of the ditch that y'all sent her a letter that she has to remove. She didn't sign up for this. She didn't sign up for taking care of the right-of-way when you took it from her. She, she signed up to have her property intact the way it is. It's the county's responsibility and the city's responsibility, but the five of you made a decision to put that on the homeowner, and it shouldn't be on the homeowner. You're here to protect us. How are you protecting your citizens? You're not. You sit up here and you argue amongst yourselves, you, every citizen is interrupted every time they speak by the mayor. Now, hopefully, Mr. Berman has corrected that, but I can assure you, there are many times that the citizens of this community have had your best interests, along with the citizens' best interests at heart. And when we get up here, we're met with, uh, lashback, like we're here doing this on purpose. We're not here, we're just trying to help. And I suggest you take the help of the citizens that are in this town that voted you into office.
Time's up. Thank you, Tracy. Del Bryant? Mrs. Patrick Smith?
Shelley Smith, poetry ETJ. I would like to tell the council and the lawyer, what happens when you email the mayor a question? She refuses to answer. You email and you ask her again. She refuses to answer. You know what happens then? I got two emails from her personal account calling me ugly names, saying very rude things. That's why I have to ask my questions in public, because when I ask in private, she gets ugly.
Since I was called out, I'm going to say that undeniably, I do respond to emails, and, um, I think you've dished it out enough to, in the last two and a half years, that, um, people know. Anyway, I, I can't respond any further. Patrick Smith? Kevin? Glenn Strauss?
Glenn Strauss, eleven zero seven two, County Road twenty-four fifty-four. I've said this before, I'll say it again. You guys are doing a terrific job in spite of the naysayers who make no sense most of the time with what they're negative about. So hang in there and keep doing a good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. Haley Dennis? Jack Stinkovich? Okay. All right, the time is now ten thirty-three. Meeting adjourned.